Good evening, everyone. Mayor Michael Owens of the city of Mableton. It's April 23rd, 2025. Welcome to our regular city council meeting. We have a pretty full agenda for you this evening with a couple, some appointees, as well as some, quite a few information that's for on our new business this evening. So with that being said, I do believe we have a quorum. We're going to go ahead and get started. I'm going to call this meeting to order at 6:37. Madam Deputy Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I have Honorable Mayor Michael Owens.
Present.
Councilmember for District One, Ron Davis, absent. Councilmember for District Two, Danny Oladipo.
Present.
Councilmember and Mayor pro tem for District Three, Keisha Jofco.
Present.
Councilmember for District Four, Patricia Ock.
Present.
Councilmember for District Five, TJ Ferguson.
Present.
Councilmember for District Six, Mr. Deborah Herndon.
Present.
All present minus Mr. Davis, but we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Manager, would you mind giving us an invocation, please, today, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. For those who are willing to participate, please join us in prayer. Heavenly Father, we pause to say thank you, to give you all the praise, glory, and honor for this city called Mableton. We ask for your wisdom to be shed upon your leaders, the Mableton City Council and our mayor, and we also ask that your protection be shed upon our citizens and businesses. Let your angels encamp around Mableton, and that you prosper Mableton in every way, and we will be careful to give you the glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Manager, former Navy Chief, would you also mind us leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Ladies and gentlemen, please stand if you can.
Yes, sir.
.....................
All right, Council, you've been provided a copy of the agenda prior to the meeting, and I do understand that we have one amendment that we would like to make before approving the agenda. So if so, I'd like to entertain a motion with the proposed change.
Yes, Mayor, I would like to approve the agenda with an amendment in that we take off item 10C, the zoning calendar, and move it to new business.
A second. Thank you. Motion's been made and duly seconded. Any discussion about the matter? I think so. Councilman, we're just going to take and move that to, we'll just take it from the top, and I'll just make it the first item of new business.
Sure, okay.
Okay. All those in favor of approval of the agenda with the amendment proposed by Councilman Ock, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you. With that being said, we're gonna, we don't have any public hearings this evening, but item seven on the agenda does include presentations, acknowledgements, and proclamations. With that, we do have our first, I guess, acknowledgements or swearing ins we're going to do. Our code enforcement, code enforcement and our inspection staff will receive their official swearing in oath, as sworn officers of the city. This is something that's required to do. So the code enforcement director, Mr. Farrell, floor is yours, sir.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council, City Manager. I'd like to introduce our code staff and our inspection staff, which are sworn officers of the city, as we enforce the municipal codes that you and the council place in ordinance for us to enforce. First, I'd like to introduce our code supervisor, Martine Innocent. Next, we have Ms. Charday Franklin, who is our code officer. And then, we have Brandon Lamar, who is another code officer. And Mr. Deandre Brown, who is our other code officer. The City Manager has incorporated a CBO position, Chief Building Official, Marcus Robinson. And our building inspector, who is David Brown. And so, if all y'all will stand, then the mayor will present the oath.
Can we stand in person, please?
Should we stand?
All right, as I hand up, I state your name. Do you solemnly swear in affirm?
Do you solemnly swear in affirm?
Then I will quickly, actually, the office of, and I will take it as due to the office of, in first order, the fourth amendment. For the city of Mableton.
For the city of Mableton.
And I will do the best of my ability.
I will do the best of my ability.
To support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
To support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of Georgia.
The Constitution of Georgia.
And the Charter, ordinances, and regulations.
And the Charter, ordinances, and regulations.
Of the city of Mableton.
Of the city of Mableton.
I am not the holder of any unaccounted public funds.
I am not the holder of any unaccounted public funds.
Due to the state or any political subdivision.
Due to the state or any political subdivision.
Or any authority thereof.
Or any authority thereof.
I am not the holder of any office of trust.
I am not the holder of any office of trust.
Under the government of the United States.
Under the government of the United States.
Any other state.
Any other state.
Or any foreign state.
Or any foreign state.
Which I, on all, the state of Georgia, permit to uphold.
Which I, on all, the state of Georgia, permit to uphold.
I am otherwise qualified to hold said office.
I am otherwise qualified to hold said office.
According to the Constitution of the state of Georgia.
According to the Constitution of the state of Georgia.
I will truly, honestly, and faithfully.
I will truly, honestly, and faithfully.
Discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
Furthermore, I will perform the duties of my office.
Furthermore, I will perform the duties of my office.
In the best interest of the city of Mableton.
In the best interest of the city of Mableton.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Without fear.
Without fear.
Favor.
Favor.
Perfections.
Perfections.
Reward.
Reward.
Or expectation thereof.
Or expectation thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
We got to have you standing up there alone.
Uh, yes.
Y'all want, y'all want to buy the, y'all want the flag in? Y'all can pull the flag if you want. Y'all want the flag in?
Sure.
All right, we'll do that. So do you all realize that this is our initial code enforcement team for the city of Mableton?
The first official.
The first. Like, this is amazing. Do you remember where we were two years ago?
Okay, this one.
You want first?
You did.
Um.
Yeah.
You, yeah, sorry. We'll just.
All right, let me go.
Here, I'll go.
All right, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Where are y'all going? Y'all don't want to stay?
They've done their duty for today. They're going to be back here bright and early tomorrow morning.
Right.
All right, we're happy to have those guys on the spot. And I'll take a moment of personal privilege here. Many of you that talked about for years, Mableton becoming the city, one of the large parts of that was that we wanted a certain look and feel to the city, and we wanted to take pride in it, and we wanted to make sure that we had a city that where multiple code violations that occurred were addressed, right? And I will say this in public, because it's been mentioned before, is that Cobb County had admittedly, while they've done a fine job, they've admittedly had not done any proactive code violations across the city. And again, that's something that's been said publicly before. The work that our community, I mean, the work that our economic, gosh, the work that our code enforcement director is going to do, and I think is already actively doing, is engaging in the community and already ensuring that people understand that there will be an attentive focus, ensuring that codes are withheld, improvement, quality of life for citizens, and ensuring that the laws and ordinance as it relates to code are being enforced in our city. So know that. You see the manpower and the people that we have hired. And so I feel comfortable about going forward, and I hope you do as well. So, thank you. With that being said, item seven B is our FY 25-Q3 financial report. I know we have our City Manager, as well as our Finance Director, who are going to be assisting with going through that report. Is that queued up?
I don't want to take away from the work that is kind of being done in behind the scenes as we kind of talk about code enforcement, and the fact that we are well along in building up our own ATL 311 version, which would be Mableton 311, that will allow citizens to be able to go and express their issues that they might see throughout the city. And he's not going to say it, but I'm going to take liberty to say that our mayor has done a great job of creating this app and creating this environment for citizens to go and start utilizing, to actually start talking through, these are issues that we have. So we just brought in this code enforcement team, but I want you to understand, this code enforcement team is not for council members, but for individual constituents, to actually talk to and see and know and hear and understand who is enforcing code in the environment. And this app that has been created, which is awesome, and he won't tell you because it's not ready yet, according to him, but there is an app that's coming that says, what's your issue? State your issue. Let us know what your issue, let us see where your issue is, and then allow us to work on fixing it. So I didn't want to allow him to escape and not acknowledge the fact that he's been working on that very diligently.
Thank you, Councilman. We want to make sure that we can meet the needs of our citizens. That's what we're going to do, every way that we can. Thank you, sir. With that, Mr. Manager, finance report?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We are, the council asks that we do a quarterly report to kind of show trends, and before I get started, I wanted to acknowledge our Finance Director, I know she's probably thinking I'm going to embarrass her, but she's been here probably three weeks, I don't know, a month, and she has hit the ground running. Very proud. I'll be showing some of the work, obviously, they've been doing. I'm up here doing the speech, but a lot, a great deal goes to Ms. Karen Ellison and her team, who have worked feverishly, sometimes on weekends, and just getting things done. So I want to acknowledge our Finance Department, a very strong finance leader, and Karen, and Deputy Director, and Mr. Denise Low. So thank you, Karen, for making us look good tonight. I'll proceed. We're going to talk briefly about revenue, noteworthy trends, expenditures, some of our summaries on that, and then we'll look at what local governments, especially for the public, really try to mark as a measure of performance, and that is how well you are managing your revenues over your expenditures. If you are paying attention to any of the news, there are cities that somehow let this get out of control, and their expenses exceed their revenues. A good mark of the city is making sure that never happens, and that comes through good management, sound fiscal policy. And I want to let this council know that you have a team, and your practices, and our team, we made sure that we do not exceed the money we have to spend. So with that said, I'll get started. And then one last bullet. We have finally, thanks to Ms. Karen Ellison and her team, we can give you a formal cash position, which I think, Council, you will be very impressed with. I know that you may not be able to see all that in front of you, Council, that numbers near, but so you're going to have to just go in blind faith and trust what I'm saying is true.
Let's not do that, Mr. Manager. I do think we all have devices here. We trust you, but we want to verify.
I have to remember, this is official meeting. My sense of hearing, Ms. Herndon, I need to leave at home, okay?
Yes.
Revenue. Let's talk about revenue. If you look at our revenue number, and I get to the bottom line, for the citizens, that bottom line says a negative 29%. Here, it says a negative 30%. And when you see a negative, that means we are under what we projected. So if I was to summarize this, we projected that we would collect nearly 14 million in revenue. We're looking at our trend, we're going to only get 10 million in revenue, okay? You may say, that's a bad thing. Well, we know what's important is do you identify why? You may have missed the mark, and you can correct it. And it's clearly, we were anticipating what we call insurance premium taxes in the amount of $4,300,000 or so, based on the feasibility study, and we're not actually eligible to collect those funds until this file. So this next year, that would truly be made up, but you'll be impressed that we realized, went to the council, we knew this early, and the council approved the strategy, you approved the strategy, Council, that we be conservative in our hiring practices, not go full staff, we didn't fill up all our departments, we went and hired those staff that would run, generate revenue, and then we started hiring staff that would get us to active city status, and that is to make sure we have sustainability, race and certification, code enforcement, and then our planning and zoning function, or enforcement of building codes, and then planning zoning. So revenue was the priority, so we could operate, and the second priority was get us to active city status. So anything like you may see no Parks Department staff, we don't have a Communications Department yet. We haven't put all our directors in, we just got some of our directors. Mr. Michael Hughes has only had one week on the job, he's hitting it. So we delayed hiring some of our full staff so that we could get through this fiscal year under the amount of expenses and revenues we projected. And that was a very good strategy that this council approved, and that's one that we have stuck to, and I've stuck to as a City Manager. So our sources of revenue, you can see there, motor vehicle, TAV, we budgeted to collect 3.2 million. We're estimating that we're going to get 2.8 at the trend we're going in, so we'll probably be slightly 12% under budget there. Our electric franchise, we're on the mark. We figured we would get somewhere around 2.7 million. We're projecting right at 2.7 million, so we may just be 2% more than what we thought we would collect. Our natural gas franchise, that's, I think, that's primarily oilstilts gas, but we projected it's 750,000 or so. We're going to be a little bit under on that one. But if you look at our business and our occupational taxes, we said we was going to get about 1.5 million. To date, we're at 2.4 million. We could lose 900,000 and still hit our mark. We are 167% above where we should be at the 75% mark, meaning we're projecting to collect 100, which is nearly the entire amount, and then another 23% of what we projected. So that's eaten up some of those negatives. So that's eaten up some of those negatives.
City Man.
Yes, sir.
Real quick, so, I might have missed this as I was trying to go get water. Timeframe for this, this is...
Oh, good questions. Q3? This is nine months. Yes, sir.
Okay, so this is over the course of the nine months. So, as we look at this, do you believe that the natural gas will trend that way?
These trends are based on monthly averages, and sometimes that's not completely accurate. It's a good way to do a budget projection. We may only get one payment per year or two payments, I'm not sure, I would probably, I asked Karen, what increments does come in? I think is it probably one time or multiple?
(inaudible).
Okay, so yeah, it's just no real exact monthly amount, but this is what we projected. We took what we collected for nine months, of course, divided by nine, and that's what your monthly average is. But that's a good indicator to try to see where you want to be at the end of the year. So it could be higher, but that won't be in a budget report. When June 30th comes, you won't get a quarterly report. We're gonna do an annual comprehensive financial report, at least six months later, which shows our, really, our actual collections, not projected. This will be the last projected report you get.
Okay. And for, just for citizens, we expect, because we have a monthly average line in here, but we expect that these numbers are trending to what they were in last fiscal year?
Last fiscal year, we were not disorganized.
I get that, I get that.
Last fiscal year, you all should applaud yourself. You did real basic, collect money and don't spend. You did the old-fashioned, my grandmother's budget, just take a bag of beans and stretch it for three months, that's what y'all did, so we didn't spend much.
We made lemonade out of lemons.
We made lemonade out of lemons, yes, sir, y'all did. Y'all didn't spend too much money at all. But now with the staff in here, as you see a full code enforcement team, vehicles, buildings, leases, uniforms, we're starting to see some of these trends, and that's telling us where we are. But, no, sir, I wouldn't compare last year to this year. This is a better picture of how we operate, and it's gonna increase, obviously, as we go full staff, but this is a pretty good picture that Ms. Karen Ellis will be using to do our official budget adoption.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, the projected business and occupation, the budgeted revenue was 1.4. How do we explain the increase in the surplus of what we've collected to date? Is it because we have new businesses?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Somehow, people are excited about Mableton. I don't know if you've been down Florid Road lately, but for some reason, Chase Bank thinks they need to come here, and there's another Fifth Day Bank. I guess they imagine there's gonna be some development. And I say that slightly unjust, but in all seriousness, the feasibility study was done 2017?
Seventeen.
So, if these numbers are holding, then that's not good. We expect, we should be over. But I think it was at Ms. Herndon and Mrs. Augs Town Hall, we did some research, and we found out the growth of businesses, and there were a lot of new businesses coming in Mableton, and so...
But, you know, there was a conversation before about those who are all reporting versus those who we need to go find. That's a whole other discussion.
Yeah, there's dual fold. On one end, we have new businesses that are coming in, almost what I alluded to a little earlier about some of the underreporting. So, and there's been businesses, I know I've seen personally, that's came in and they've paid 2014, or gosh, 2024 and 2025, some 2023, right? So there's been some businesses that, quite frankly, just weren't paying their taxes, and now they are.
So, and I guess my question is, have we started going after?
No, sir.
Okay.
Let me, I'm gonna let the city attorney...
Yep, I'm directing this toward the city attorney.
I'll let the city attorney speak.
Be very careful what I ask.
But listen, you know I'm a straight shooter. As you stand up and say, "The first thing to do is put the mechanism in place to start collecting the money." Once you get the mechanism in place, you start doing for this thing called compliance. If we're collecting at a rate of 85% of our businesses, and the target may be code enforcement's gonna go out and see if you have an occupational tax certificate in your business that's up to date, and you don't, you will get issued a warning that you need to get a business license. We will eventually set goals as we go into what I call our micro-transition, where we'll be shooting for 90, at least 90, 95% compliance with the occupational tax. So right there, you'll see more than what was projected, because we do have a lot of new businesses. But that number will definitely increase, because we're gonna do what we call enforcement and compliance checks. And there are businesses sometime that think you're not watching, and so they don't have to have a license. But with your new code enforcement team, they will have a season and a strategy where they will go out and start looking at businesses and checking to see if an occupational tax certificate is in place. And if they're not, then they will be cited and required to make up. And there are history where, in certain cities, where some folks hadn't paid in 10, 15 years, and you can see these numbers skewed by a big jump for somebody. So, there is two-fold, like the mayor said, there are new businesses coming in, there's also, this is a slightly time-lagged feasibility projections, but also, we haven't been able to measure, but we will do that. Mr. Attorney, I know you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's two components that also add to that. One, we did send out delinquency notices to several hundred businesses, and that generated additional revenue about a year ago. And then, two, we noticed, when we first started administering the business licensing, that the information that the county had provided to us, which was likely the information that they provided to Carl Vincent to do the feasibility study, we noticed that there were at least 200 businesses that were left off. So the county quickly supplemented that and gave us the missing businesses. So I think that income disparity is certainly a result of at least those 200 businesses that were not accounted for.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna move on from revenues, I'm gonna just highlight a few of them. We haven't set up a court yet, so you see that, nothing there. And then, interest revenue, we're putting our money somewhere where it's generating money, and we didn't budget collecting anything in interest, but so far, we've got $36,000 in interest. And then you look at our hotel motel, which, shout out to Ms. Karen Ellis, she has now created, in our bank account, a separate account to receive our 275, which is our hotel motel funds, and you'll see that in our cash position. This here does account for, I think it's 37% that stays, that's Ellis will go back to general fund, and then there's 43 and 18% that go for destination maintenance organizations, product development, which Mableton will be in a position to have, meet Mableton. And these funds will be used to create marketing opportunities to cause people to want to come to our city. So, this down here in green just shows another level of revenue, but these revenues have restrictions by state law that they must be used for marketing, and they must be used for creating destinations here in our city or causing people to come to our city. But the rest of this up here is general fund, Fund 100, and that's at the discretion of the council and the budget. So, going to the next slide. I hit most of these points in my discussion. We should be at 75% of our budget for revenue, we're at 53%. We explained that because of the insurance premium tax. Our business license, again, is making up the slack, this is nine-month mark. On an average, we're averaging north of $800,000 a month in revenue. We're projected to bring in nearly $10 million for FY25, and I do want to state, again, this revenue has all been collected with a property tax of zero. No property tax assessed, this has all come from those sources identified, franchise fees, occupational tax, hotel motel, community development services in our TAVT. And now that we have our environmental maintenance fee that's coming on board, we're gonna start, we got permits we're issuing, you're gonna see other sources of revenue coming up. But overall, we're projected to miss our projected revenue by 30%, and that's because of that one factor, which will self-correct in FY26. Moving on to expenditures, let's get down to the bottom line. You know we were under revenue collections for overall, and if you look at this number here, being under expenditures is a good thing. If you're supposed to spend $10, and you only spent $5, that's good. I gotta do one, some good-looking Mableton folks out there, I didn't stop and look at y'all, but this is a good-looking city, I just want to stop and say that.
Yes, indeed.
So, when you look at some of these, our governing body, mayor's office, city manager, these are departments that Karen Ellis and her team have broke out, and they're keeping up with how departments are spending. Same format, what was budgeted, what they actually spent, what's available to spend, and where they are for the year. Let's focus on that column. They should have spent 75% of their budget by this time of year. The council, you've only spent 57% as of nine months. Mayor, you've only spent 47% at nine months. City manager, maybe Karen's making me look good, that's hard to believe, 26, you know, they take care of city manager, you know what I mean? 26%, I really believe that. 28% on our clerk. We got 54% legal, and our biggest expense, obviously, is in HR, and that's because we put all of our insurance premiums through the HR department instead of breaking them out per department. And I think Ms. Ellis eventually, she is gonna get that correct. Tomorrow, she says tomorrow, she's gonna fix that. Karen's been digging into the numbers, so HR won't have all that weight on there. Our facilities, 38%, but the bottom line is, neither, no one is at the 75% mark, and that's gonna explain that our expenses, and this is just true, at nine months, we've only spent 25% of what we projected expenses, and that's what's gonna make us look very good, even though we didn't collect all our revenues. If you go over here, bottom line, we're projecting, we will not hit 50% of our projected expenditures, which is gonna put us in what we call a good mark, measurement of government. What's the net revenue over your expenditures? Even though we were under our revenues, we're really under in expenditures because of the strategy we deployed, and that's gonna put us at 145% over that net. We call that fund balance. That's the balance of the fund that's left over after you met all your expenditures, and that's pretty good, Council. I know you don't like applauding yourself, but as a two-year council, with these kind of funds, without a millet, y'all should be very proud. It's gotta be our own AJC, the HNDJ, the Detroit News, the Honolulu News...
You said Detroit.
The Detroit News, that's right. The bankrupt city of my hometown.
We're not trying to be like Detroit.
No, sir. Y'all should be showing how you do it. But that's impressive, Council, and it's noteworthy. Moving on, I hit these points already. Our projected expenditures for city may be slightly under 13 million. We should be at 75% at this time of year, we're actually really at 28% when you get down to the nuts and bolts of it. But we're averaging $400,000 a month in expenditures. When you see that $800,000 a month in revenue, that shows you that surplus we're creating. So we're projected to expand about 4.8, I'll say round it up, 5 million this year in expenditures. And the major expenditures are staff, our facilities, we've had to get facilities, people working, technology, we made sure everybody has the equipment they need to do their work, and then we've had legal expenses, I don't have to go into detail, I think everybody's pretty aware, we've had some heavy legal expenses in our year, but they turned out some good things. But we're projected to be under budget by 60%, which is really only spending 24, if we go out for the whole 12 months, we'll see as the year ends where we end up. So, wrapping this up, bottom line, how much did we bring in, how much did we spend, gives you this number called fund balance. Now, here, well, numbers that Karen and her team put together, we separate what we call M&amp;O. M&amp;O is called maintenance and operation, that's your operating budget. If this is your home budget, that's what you use to buy your groceries, pay for your gas. And then we have capital, that's what you use to invest in infrastructure, that's when you buy your car or your house. Once it's paid off, you ain't gotta pay it again. But you need your capital expenditures, and those two are separated. We budgeted to spend 1.5 million in capital expenditures. And Council, I don't want to be a wet cloth, but if we keep spending at the rate we are with our capital, we are projected to slightly go over 17%. Is that a bad thing? Not really. There's things you don't anticipate when you're trying to build out buildings and you've got the infrastructure. Overall, our total expenditure still, when you look at capital and maintenance operations, we're still gonna come out pretty good at 63% under budget. Our fund balance, if I say negative is over, we projected, after we collected all our money, paid all our bills, including capital, including the debt service that we are using for our URA, we projected we would have at least a million, 1.13 million money left over at the end of the year for fund balance. Right now, we actually have 3.9 million in our fund balance. That means we could blow 2.9, and no, you will not do it, no, we're not gonna let you do it, but you could lose 2.9 million and still come out to our target. We are 300% over. This number is three times that amount where we should be in our surplus. So, we are projected to be 361%, we're projecting a $5 million surplus. Now, don't anyone get excited, that's not me, you know, we're gonna give away money or go back and do anything stupid. We gotta go to next year, we wanna keep, you have to, a good city wants two to four months, two to six months of operating reserves. If we're operating at $500,000 a month, that's typically, we want a million to 2 million in our operating reserves. We're sitting pretty good. But that's the whole picture of revenues, expenditures, and what we have left over, and that's attributed really to our strategy, to be conservative in our hiring and setting up our departments, and it's both for all, Council. I'll cover those points here, I won't go over those. Achieving two to six months of operating reserves within your first two years is impressive. Not all cities do that. Some cities fail that miserably. Let's talk about cash position, and I'll close out and entertain any questions for the council. We started out, because you all were stingy, did I say that publicly?
You did.
I shouldn't, that was my Friday slip. You all were conservative.
We're fiscally responsible.
I said, we started out with 3.5 million fund balance at the beginning of the year. So we already started out in a strong position. With inflation to where it was in the year you all set up, I think it was somewhere around 8%, then it dropped to 4%, we're somewhere around 3%. You all sustained that type of fund balance during those inflationary years, that's a sure sign of what I call resilience. And so because of that attitude you've had, the city is well-funded to complete all requirements of an active city status and come out of transition in a very sound financial position. And that financial position, you can't see these numbers, I attribute this to Ms. Karen, she's got great eyes, I don't think she realized, I can't see, I'm being silly again. But I'm gonna tell you what these numbers are. In our general fund, in our investments, if you look at, we put some money up when we did a URA, what we call collateral, we put money in treasury funds, we got 3.2 million sitting over in our chores account. In our United Bank, in our money market, we got 2.7 million sitting in there. And then you look at, we've been wise to take anything above our operating reserves and put it in the Georgia Fund Run, Council, you approved that, and that's earned a pretty good amount of interest, is 2 million sitting there. Our total general fund cash and cash equipments, to date, our cash position, is just under $8 million. That's 7.9 million that the city has put away to invest in either capital or sustain maybe financial or economic downturns, but we're in a good position there. And then we have what we call a URA. Our URA, I think that's up here, Karen, is that?
That's where it is.
Which is the money market, that's where the URA is? This one here, 27? Okay, so that's the way it is in there. But, United Bank, this is our operating account, which is about a half a million dollars, and then Karen has broke out our hotel motel fund, which now goes into a separate account. It's right at about $600,000. We'll eventually have to, you know, do what we're supposed to do with that, but it's sitting there for that reason. So, if you count that, not all that's able to spend, we're north of $8 million in our cash position as we speak. So, that's the conclusion of the financial, the FY25 Q3 financial report, it'll be the last projected one, the next time we do a report will be actual. So, I'll pause, Mr. Mayor, and Council, to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, for that presentation. Council, any questions, comments related to the report?
I'm trying to find it. There was one question I had about whether or not this was sustainable, and I can't find the actual line item.
Typically, you only get questions when you mess up money.
Yeah, no, and this is, so the Department 1565, Facilities M&amp;O, it's budgeted at 210, the actual's 80, the available, 129, 38%. twenty-nine, thirty-eight percent. So is this with locations already established, or is this after, or without locations?
Let me find out where you are.
Uh.
You are at, um...
I'm at the blue one.
On revenues, expenditures?
Expenditures.
Okay.
Yeah, that one.
Okay, and you are at fifteen sixty-five?
Yeah.
Um, facilities, budgeted two-ten, actual's eighty, we've still got a hundred twenty-nine available, we're expected to spend a hundred and two in maintenance operations, which means we're gonna be forty-nine percent under budget, which means it's definitely sustainable.
So, am I looking at the right, the same?
I think so. The M and O is maintenance and operations.
You're talking capital.
Right. No, no, I'm talking maintenance operations, it says thirty-eight percent, but you just said forty-nine percent.
No, uh, let's see, let's go back, fifteen sixty-five.
I see.
I said at the, so at the end of the year, twelve months, so right now, at nine months, we are thirty-eight percent under budget.
Okay, and, and you expect that to be, um, something that's sustainable?
We're projecting forty-nine percent, we put a good amount, we budgeted two hundred and ten thousand in lease, that's, and Karen's gotta reclassify this, 'cause I think some long-term lease actually become capital, we gotta go by what we call gas, we, uh, it's just government accounting standards, so because of the length of the lease, it may be capitalized, but right now, we have it as an operation, and because we didn't start certain leases until, we, we got one lease we haven't started, twelve forty-five, we were moving that to next month, so there's a lot of savings that's happened and that, so we're gonna be, we're not gonna spend all that money up, because we didn't start some leases until, um, some in March, we started our lease paying, and then we're gonna start our twelve forty-five lease, uh, here probably in May. So those months we didn't pay lease, all that built up. So it's right now, but to your point, next year, that number could possibly go up, as we expand space, leases increase, if we capitalize on lease, it may go in capital, uh, so that number for next year may be different. The council's gonna get a chance to see, Ms. Karen Ellis and her team have already started budget season, she's already working with department heads, as we start looking at last year's budget and make adjustments, we'll be coming to the council, and I suspect, uh, fifteen sixty-five is gonna change pretty much, probably the biggest change.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's a great thing, I want everybody to understand that that is a line item that we want to see shrink, because we want to see the, that percentage shrink, because it means that we're moving into more and more, and we're buying more real estate, we're getting into more real estate, because we are growing as a city. So as we kinda look at these things, it's not a bad thing to see some of these line items, um, you know, reduce, and, and it become something that we're at more like two percent.
Yes, sir. Well, Karen and I have discussed, we would like to, of course, go to council, adopt a ph- a philosophy where we try to target eighty percent of our budget. We, we'd like to leave about a twenty, twenty-five percent cushion. Uh, that's gonna be, from a city manager's perspective, I'll be holding departments to that line. You never know, things happen, you wanna have some space, so we look good, and we're gonna tend to continue to do that.
Awesome, thanks.
All right, thank you. Uh, again, Karen and finance team, thank you all very much.
All right, with that being said... That being said, we're gonna move along, uh, the next item is eight A, which is the zoning board of appeal appointments. Um, zoning board of appeals obviously goes along with our planning and zoning commission, it's important we have a zoning, uh, board of appeals in place, deal with variances and how we move forward through the process. With that being said, uh, the council has all selected, um, members that will be serving on the, um, board of zoning appeals. Um, what we're gonna do is, um, counsel, we're just simply doing an appointment for this evening, um, what's been determined is that we are going to, uh, at the first meeting of the board of zoning appeals, or anytime there before, we'll actually do their, um, swearing in and, um, more ceremonial appointment to the, to the board.
Do we know when that will be?
Uh, no, I do not think so, because there's, um, but if you look down at consent agenda D, there's an approval of board, uh, of zoning appeals calendar. So as I said, either at that first meeting or before, it could be before, but if not, it'll be at that first meeting. So with that being said, counsel, um, I'll, I'll just read them all for the sake of folks knowing, uh, it's Conrad Woods, Jerry Aldridge, Helen Butler Simmons, Christopher Sel- Selmer, Wendy Brown Sanders, Janelle Withers. If any of y'all are in the audience, would you mind standing, just so people know who you are?
Yes.
So, I, um, and again, the, the purpose of the board of zoning appeals, that is the quasi, we'll say quasi-judicial, uh, board that is in place to ensure that, um, before a appeal to a zoning issue would go to the Superior Court of Georgia, there is a, or Superior Court of Cobb County, my apologies, there is, uh, an intermediary that's there, uh, that will serve to make sure that the rules and, uh, laws of the zoning policies have been adhered to. Uh, at this point in time, what I'll ask the council to do is, um, move forward with voting on the specific people that have been appointed, uh, so at this point in time, I'll entertain a motion, uh, to approve the appointees for the boning, uh, board of zoning appeals.
I make a motion to approve the appointees for the board of zoning appeals.
Second.
Thank you, uh, motion's been made and duly seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of approval of the, uh, board of zoning appeal appointees, uh, that has been both enumerated by myself, as well as what's on the agenda memorandum, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. We now have an official, uh, board of zoning appeals appointees, congratulations to you all. I will say with, with this, uh, board, like all others, these are volunteer roles, these people are taking time out of their time, um, and, and day away from their families and business, uh, to volunteer and support, give their time for the benefit of all of our citizens of this great city. So with that, again, I applaud you and thank you again for what you're doing. With that, that's our only appointments for this evening, so we'll move forward with public comments. Uh, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment cards this evening?
Yes, sir, I currently have two. Um, if anyone else has one, please bring it up. Um, I have Ms. Denny Wilson, and we will follow with...
Madam Clerk, can you speak into the mic?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I have Ms. Denny Wilson, and then we will follow up with Ms. Phyllis Arthur, Arthur?
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Wilson.
Um, I want to address you guys, um, this evening about the, uh, meeting that was printed in the paper when you guys met with the county, and I have a lot of concerns, um, about what came out of that meeting, um, and what the county said. So my question to you, if somebody could get back with me, like I said, I know it's not a Q, a Q and A, um, we've been paying property taxes to the county long before Mableton became a city, and in twenty seventeen, when Mike Boris raised the millage, I requested from the county a breakout of how much we paid for police, how much of our property taxes went for police, how much of our property taxes went for DOT, and I was directed to go look at the county budget, but that wasn't what I wanted. I wanted to know, um, area by area, what we contributed to the property taxes, uh, I'm sorry, what we contributed to services based on our property taxes. So my question to you tonight is, I'm wondering, and maybe this is a question for the county, because now that Mableton, or they will be charging you for, for police and for DOT, do we as citizens get a reduction in our property taxes that we pay the county? Because, because some kinda way, you gotta make it make sense math-wise, and right now, the math is not adding up, because if the county's saying that you, they want us to pay twenty, seventeen million for police and two point four million for DOT, I think we really deserve a reduction in property taxes going forth. I mean, why would we continue to pay the full property tax to the county when, um, the, these services are being taken out? So maybe that's something that you can, um, you can address the county with, because, like I said, I, I mean, I think I'm pretty good in math, but their math is just not adding up. I mean, and, um, if we're not gonna get a reduction in our property taxes that we pay, because you guys don't get any of that, one hundred percent of those property tax dollars goes to the county, and, um, I'll go talk to them as well to find out, you know, what can be done, because I think we, we deserve a reduction. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, I am Phyllis Arthur, and this is the first meeting I have attended, but I just have, I don't know if it's a complaint or questions. Um, since we've become city of Mableton, we want the city to look beautiful, we want it to look nice. You know, I, custom, what I do is, my job, I go to different cities and see different areas, and their areas and their cities look nice, but if you go down Mableton Parkway and Veterans Memorial, you see run-down tire businesses, um, liquor stores within a couple of miles of each other, I mean, they just built another one, and it's like three or four, it's five on Veterans Memorial right now, six. So I'm just wondering, what are we gonna do with the orange, blue, green, red buildings that look like a, look like little Chinatown or something, I'm not trying to be mean or something, but it just, it's just kinda disgraceful city with all the tire businesses that look rundown on, on Veterans Memorial. Um, I, I moved here in ninety-nine for my job, and then I moved again, still in Mableton, and I wrote, wrote a letter, an email about ten years ago about our street, that we had a daycare on our street, who had a blind, um, child in there, and we had an elementary school, and we had a lot of elderly people, 'cause my aunt lived with me before she passed, and she could not get out of the driveway, because people were driving up and down the street, sixty-five, seventy-five miles per hour. How do I know? Because my nephew's a police officer in Douglas County, he just came there and just held this little thing up, and it was, they were coming down Dodgin Road, sixty-five, seventy-five miles per hour. Uh, when I wrote the guy about it, he just laughed and said that, and I asked, could we get speed bumps over there, just a few to slow them down, and he just laughed and said, what do you want us to do, build a whole new road? So, I, because I, I didn't wanna lose my respect, and, you know, I wanted to be tactful, I didn't respond. But on a road like that, it has daycares and elementaries that don't have sidewalks on both sides, all the way down, some of the children are walking in the grass, and people are flying down the street, and since I've been on that, on that road, there have been six accidents, and about ten people who ran in the ditch to keep from hitting little kids, or to keep from hitting elderly pulling, pulling out. So I'm just wondering, is there any way that we could get a few speed bumps on Dodgin Road, and could we not have people come in with all the tire businesses and all the orange and blue and red and green buildings that make the property, Mableton look not as beautiful as it wanted to look? And that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you for that, ma'am.
Can, can we just ask for location of that?
She said Dodgin Road.
Yeah, district.
Dodgin Road.
You have her address.
That's District Three.
Yeah, that...
Dodgin Road.
Are you District Three, ma'am, or Two? You're not sure? Dodgin Road? Okay.
Dodgin Road.
The Dodgin is Three, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
No additional comments?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With that, we'll go ahead and, uh, conclude our public comments, uh, section, and go into item ten, which is our consent agenda. Uh, counsel, we do have three items on our consent agenda, as a reminder, um, when we were approving the agenda, we did move one of those to new business. The three consent agenda items are the approval of the, of the April seventh work session minutes, the approval of the April ninth regular meeting minutes, and the approval of the planning and zoning twenty twenty-five calendar. Uh, you all have that in your agenda packet, um, so at this point in time, I'd like to go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you, motion's been made and duly seconded. Uh, any discussion?
Um, as far as diszerning appeals, I didn't even think of that one. Uh, do we want to let them make a...
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I, 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 I actually messed that up, I, please, uh, amend that motion, who made the motion?
I did.
Could you do a friendly, uh, amendment to that motion, because, um, we should keep the item D on the consent agenda, but take item C off?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve...
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah, I was gonna ask if we needed to take off both, like, do we want to let the zoning appeals board meet first and then decide if that schedule works, or do they not, do we're just gonna do it?
I think we're gonna do it, and give them an opportunity, if we need to amend that later, we will.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, uh, with the, with the exception, exception of item C, we're moving that to, uh, new business?
Oh, unfinished business?
New business.
Can, can, can we have just a second? Because, and this might be my hoops.
So they're just taking off C?
So the agenda that's on, online, doesn't have both C and D, it only has C.
You, you are correct.
So the one, the paper copy that we're looking at has both C and D, so I wanna make sure that Councilman Ock is...
Yeah, I didn't even notice that until this, um...
Well, 'cause that's, when the, when we approved the agenda with the amendment, it was based on a paper one, because...
It was based on the paper one?
Yes.
Okay. So Councilwoman Ock, your, your amendment to the agenda still holds true?
I mean, yeah, I do wanna keep the, I do want to take the, the planning and diszerning calendar off, because I do know there's a conflict with that one, I don't know about the board of diszerning appeals, because they haven't met yet.
Yeah, there can't be a conflict with that, 'cause they haven't met yet, so...
Right.
Um, and, and I'm, I'm saying that may come up at a future time.
We can always amend it after, just like we do with the planning commission, let them meet, and then if they have a conflict, they'll bring it back.
Correct.
So do we have to approve the zone appeals calendar today?
We do not have to, but we've already approved the agenda.
We've approved the agenda based on the paper agenda?
Yes.
And did that take off the board of zoning appeals, or the D?
No, it takes...
Or did it take off the C?
It just takes off C.
C.
Yes, it just takes off C.
Their calendar.
Correct.
Okay. I, I just wanna make sure that we're...
Yeah, no, we're good.
That we don't bring this up later.
It may come up later, but it, but procedurally, we're correct with what we're doing now.
Okay.
So...
I made it, just waiting for a second.
So what, what is the, the motion on the floor?
The motion is approve the consent agenda with the, um, this, the item C is already been taken off, so it's just approve the consent agenda, correct?
Item C being approval of board of zoning appeals twenty twenty-five calendar?
No.
No.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, we have to say what it exactly is, because what's online is different than what's paper.
No, so we've already removed the approval of the planning and zoning calendar, that's already been moved from the consent agenda.
Yeah, that's already been...
So we don't have to address it anymore, the, it was, that's already been addressed, that's no longer on the dissent agenda, that was already taken off. So Councilwoman Ock's question was, should we move forward with the board of zoning appeals calendar still being on the consent agenda? And my response to that was yes, because we've already approved the agenda with that item on there, so...
I think going forward, we need to make sure the agenda that is online for the public to view is the same that's up here with us.
That is, that is correct.
That may have been my issue, I moved it when you guys first mentioned it to where it should be. So I'm actively updating while you guys...
Thank you, so she was actively updating, so...
Ah, okay, thank you, okay.
So she moved item, she moved item C instead of D, so which makes that now C. So which makes that now C.
I got you.
So, so if she's actively updating that, that's, that's a mishap, but we're sticking with the paper copy that we have right now for the agenda. It's on the front side of your computer.
Is it appropriate for me to second the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I will second the motion.
Thank you. The motion's been made and duly seconded. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. There are no nays, the ayes have it. Thank you. We have no unfinished business for this evening. We do have several items of new business. The first one, and we're gonna try to batch some of these together, but the first one is a first read, it's an ordinance updating Chapter Two.
We moved that to the first item.
Oh, we did. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm trying to move this along here.
I know.
So we, we, what we need to do is address the item that we took off the consent agenda, which is the approval of the planning and zoning calendar. It's been brought to my attention, Councilwoman Ock actually made the council aware earlier that there were some planning, let's just say that there was some challenges with the current calendar and there were some asking for that to be amended. I don't know what those specific amendments or changes are to the calendar.
I'd like to amend it to keep the May sixth date as it is, since that's what's on our zoning signs. That's, was the date that was specifically in conflict. And that's it. Like just the meeting that's upcoming on May sixth, keep that date. And then going forward, we can keep the, the proposed schedule that's in our packet.
So that's not currently on?
So this was changed to the eighth. I'm saying change that to the sixth and then everything else in white.
So Councilwoman Ock, you're proposing just to change to one of the dates?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and just for a point of clarity, why are you asking for that change?
It was requested to me earlier by one of the planning commissioners. That was a conflict and he had already verified with our zoning manager of the next meeting date. He made plans for Mother's Day weekend based on that date. So if we changed it, he wouldn't be able to attend this meeting and the two zoning cases in our upcoming meeting is in his district. So I think it's vital that he is present and that we not change the meeting. That would exclude him from attending.
Okay.
People, can, may I ask the Director, Community Development Director, a comment?
Sure.
There are two public hearings that I requested that Chris notice for the Planning Commission. Do you know if he's already noticed them for May sixth? Or do you know what date he may have noticed them for?
I do not know the specific date that he noticed them for, so let me check and I'll have to get back.
Okay, because I asked him to notice those for May sixth. So actually moving forward with May sixth would be consistent with the date that I asked him to notice these items for. So I'm hoping that he has not already changed it to the new date because it sounds like there was a new date that was proposed.
I mean, we haven't approved it yet. That's what's in our packet and what's being asked for us to approve. I would hope he didn't go forward with a new schedule before it was approved.
And that's what I was trying to confirm, whether he did that or not.
And I'll double check that with, with him. So going forward, are they?
Go ahead, I'm sorry. I, we may be saying, go ahead, go ahead, Councilman.
I'm just gonna ask, going forward, so the dates that are agreed upon via this calendar, is it up to counsel to decide those dates or is it up to that board to decide those dates and then to notice them and all that sort of thing? Are we gonna have to deal with?
Sure.
Counseling that, I mean, scheduling that every time?
So with the calendar being approved through resolution by the governing body, by the council, then those changes have to come through the council. That's because that's where they were set. What I would ask Mr. Hughes, though, is that for changes like this?
Yes, sir.
I mean, we, we are, we are setting some precedences here and you have vast more experience than any of us on this. I am sensitive to changes, particularly based on one person's personal calendar, quite frankly. But they have all rights and I think they should be reaching out and, and expressing those. But because there's other things like noticing and how it impacts other businesses that are, that are scheduled, I wanna make sure it doesn't come to the council as, right, a request for change. There's too many other, too many things happening.
Right.
Really for us to be able to make a decision on whether that should be changed or not.
Right.
I would much rather see that come through you as a request. And then you could try to, you know, at least make sure all the other dots have been connected before it comes to the council. And maybe something could be worked out besides us making a change. I just, I wanna make sure that.
I do have another alternate solution possibly. Because we know that the Planning Commission will be meeting on May sixth and what I'm proposing is that they get to meet on May sixth, we can defer this, let them hash out their schedule, make a recommendation and bring that at our next council meeting, since their next Planning Commission meeting won't be until June. And then you would know if it works or not. It would be at the direction of the Planning Commission and not us unilaterally making changes.
I think the issue with the, with the current schedule that was changed was because it was in conflicts with the Keep Mayberton Beautiful Board meetings. And one of the, one of the Planning Commission board member is on that board as well. So, I mean, Keep Calm Beautiful, I'm sorry.
I can barely hear you.
So, yeah, the reason for the change or the process is Keep Calm Beautiful, which I am a huge fan, she is on their board and they meet on the first Tuesday of the month. And so like this wouldn't have been a good long-term schedule for them.
Exactly.
But as far as for this next meeting, since it's already been noticed, it's what's on the zoning signs and the zoning cases directly impact, would impact the Commissioner in District Four. There aren't any zoning cases for District Two coming up. So I think we keep the, the meeting date for May sixth the same.
So.
This is so reasonable, guys.
It, it is. You're right. It's very reasonable. I just wanna make sure that we understand this is zoning appeals.
No.
No. It's Planning Commission.
Zoning Commission, excuse me. And it's based off of the, the cases that we have and the timeliness of the cases that we have. So if we're setting this as the, you know, whatever that is, the second Tuesday of the month, are, are you saying, Councilman, Councilwoman Ock, that this schedule hasn't necessarily been communicated and agreed upon with those people?
This has not been presented to the Planning Commission, to my knowledge. We do have a chairperson here. If you wanna, if the mayor would want to bring him up and ask questions, but.
Okay.
I, 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 I would not, honestly. That, that's something that I want our Community Development Director to quite frankly sort through. There is an, an issue that I hear, though, about if, if a member that is volunteering for us is also serving in another capacity in another jurisdiction that has a conflict. I understand that that calendar was probably set long before our calendar was set. But, but then are we potentially talking about more than just one meeting for this one person?
This would not change, this is to absolve her conflict. The, for this, the new schedule is to absolve her commissioner's conflict, but the first one is in conflict, but that date was already set. So I'm just proposing we keep the first date and then going forward, they could set the new schedule, which they did discuss at their first meeting.
So we're keeping the five-eight date?
No.
No, five, sorry.
Five, five-six.
Even though this paper says.
And if I could add to the answer of the, the city attorney's question, and we have a text here from, from Christopher, he did advertise for May sixth. May eighth wasn't oversight.
Okay, there were, we should.
We're done.
Perfect.
Okay.
All right, non-issue.
Right.
So we can keep it on the consent agenda. We're good.
Well, well, this is exactly why I said I really don't want this coming to us without it going through the Community Development Director.
Mr. Hughes, is there any issue with the June date as far as notices go? Or is it just the May date?
Just, just the May date.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Is the May date still in question if it's five-six?
It will be five-six.
It is five-six because that's what was advertised.
That was my question.
May sixth was advertised. That's what was advertised.
Yep.
Right. So is five-six okay?
Okay for?
Yes, please keep it five-six and five.
Yes, that's what was advertised. And his text says for legal reasons to keep the May sixth date.
Okay.
It says five-eight.
Yes, the new, this sketch, that's why I brought it off consent agenda. Yes, what is in the packet is not, not correct. And so I'm just getting clarification that it should be five-six. We got the clarification?
Yes.
We're good. Okay. Do we need to make any kind of motion or is that?
Are all the other dates that have been communicated to somebody okay for the Planning Commission?
I believe so. I.
I believe so, but I've been here one week, so I. I don't wanna get into that right now. That was so easy. You don't know.
Well, Chris emailed us and said he was going to run the dates by the Planning Commission, so I know that was his intent.
Okay. And can we confirm that that conflict is actually resolved with this new date from Chris? The conflict with the Keep Calm Beautiful meeting?
Because I don't know what. I mean, I feel pretty confident in saying that the new schedule, with the exception of May sixth, that it should be May sixth, is resolves the conflict that your unjust null or had on the commission. That was the whole purpose and the reason for a new schedule was to absolve her conflict. So the only conflict is in the schedule, it says May eighth. We don't want May eighth, we want May sixth.
Yeah, that works for me.
Okay.
All right, Counsel, at this point in time, I'd like to entertain a motion to table item, which is effectively eleven or twelve A, which is the approval of the planning and zoning twenty twenty-five calendar. And that table will be indefinite.
It's a motion to table this, this item because it doesn't need to be voted on.
I mean, we can do that. I'll second it. I'll make the motion. We can table it.
Okay.
Do we need to make a motion or you need a motion? Okay.
Do we need a date, though, of when we'll take it off?
But we've got to approve what is the.
Right now, right now, the current schedule is May sixth.
But the current schedule that we have in the agenda packet says May eighth. So we need the agenda packet to be.
So there's two ways we can do it. We can either table it and the date for May sixth remains, or we go and we amend this to keep May sixth and then we amend the schedule. Either way.
In a general conception, if we amend the May eighth.
That's, yeah, we can make an exception, right?
Yeah, either, either one works.
I thought you said didn't need any changes.
Oh, no, we're changing it to May sixth from eighth.
Okay. All right. So, so I'll just entertain a motion to approve it with that one.
So I'll make a motion to approve the, the planning and zoning twenty twenty-five calendar with the change of the date from May eighth to May sixth.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. The motion's been made and approved. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of move, of approving the motion made by Councilman Ferguson, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. We'll move forward with the approval of the planning and zoning calendar for twenty twenty-five. And, and just going forward, Community Development Director, Community Development Director, we're going to make sure that all of the dates that are on that calendar stick with everybody on the commission and we're good with that. Any questions that come forward are gonna come from you.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
He's only been here a week.
Thank you, Members of Counsel. Let's move forward. Our next item in new business is the first read of an ordinance updating Chapter Two, the Administration of City of Mayberton's Code of Ordinances, creating a new article, which is Article Four for code enforcement. With that being said, I know we're gonna have our Community Development Director come up. While he does, Madam Attorney, do you have anything you want to add to this?
Well, I can listen to the, where you, do you want me to go first or?
Go, go ahead.
Okay. Were you planning to give a general overview? Because I don't wanna duplicate if you were.
Um, no, you can actually, I mean, you drafted the ordinance and I'm just here if they have questions.
He's ready for questions.
Okay, so this mayor and council is the creation of a new article under, let me flip the page because I had the wrong ordinance. This is a new article under your administration code.
Chapter Two, Article Four.
Yes, so Chapter Two is your administration code and then this creates Article Four. And this just deals with code enforcement. It defines what a code enforcement officer is, what a person is. Just for clarity, a person can be a corporation entity, et cetera. It, it defines what a repeat violation is, what a violator means. It talks about the authority of the code enforcement officers, which is to issue citations and to implement code enforcement activities against any of the provisions of the city code. It has a procedure for issuing citations. It has a method for service of citations and it includes minimum contents for citations, which includes the date and time of issuance, the name, the date the violation was allegedly committed, the number or section of the code that's alleged to be violated, the name of the code enforcement, code enforcement officer, the date, time and location. And then it has a section that says that the code enforcement's ability to pursue citations under this particular section is non-exclusive. And what that means is that they do not have to issue citations. They can utilize other processes that are available under, under the law, such as N-RAM abatement processes or superior court proceedings. The recommendation, this is first read and the recommendation would be to move forward with the second read at your next regular meeting and proceed with adoption.
Thank you for that, Madam Attorney. With that being said, Counsel, I wanna go ahead and entertain a motion to approve an ordinance updating Chapter Two, creating a new Article Four.
This is first read.
Oh, see, I'm really trying to move fast. I'm really trying to move fast. I'm trying to get this done. So being the fact that this is the first read, Counsel, our code enforcement directors here, if you have any questions about this code enforcement, specifically as it relates to the article, or Article Four, shall I say?
The only question I have is, as I was reading through it, it, it makes mention of service of citations and it specifically states hand-delivering the citation. I, I've heard that we might not be able to hand-deliver because folks are in Houston or, you know, all over the country, all over the world that own certain locations. So how do they, how do we figure those into this? Should we change that or remove that hand-deliver the citation comment from the actual ordinance?
Yes, I can get with the city attorney. We can do that. Legal, from my experience, we can actually email certified mail, posting the property, whatever property is in our jurisdiction is actually legal enough for the servants of a citation. But we can also amend the, from a text piece of it. So, so what I read was wherever possible and practical. So if it's not possible or practical, if they live out of state. I mean, it didn't explicitly say email or, or snail mail, but it says wherever possible and practical. And, and normal process would be to send it, if it's a corporation, for sure, send it to the registered agent and he or she, that is their responsibility to forward any of those documents to. If it's an individual, then yes, we would have to do, you know, like certified mail, you know, return receipt, things of that nature. And worst, I would say worst-case scenario, I would have to find a process server or find another code enforcement entity, which they are sworn officers in the same, you know, in our same capacity or same field, which I've done in the past, and say, hey, I need to, can you go issue the citation to Mr. Smith who lives in Houston, Texas at one, two, three Main Street? So.
So I don't know.
Yeah, and I can tell you some instances where it's possible, where I would say it's reasonably possible and practical, and that's if you have a restaurant or a business establishment, or if you are driving by and you are seeing people doing illegal activities in the right of way. If you catch someone doing the activity and it's of an extreme nature where the discretion is not to give a warning but to give a citation, at that point, you would just hand-deliver. When you're dealing with residences, particularly if it doesn't look safe, like if they're dogs or animals, so it's just really in the discretion of the code enforcement officer whether it's practical at that point to issue the citation. And if the code enforcement officer makes the determination that it is not practical, then it has other means within this code for the service. And that includes, as he indicated, certified mail for businesses giving to the registered agent. And if you look at subsection 234, it enumerates what some of the other service capacities are.
Have we circulated communication out to our residents to let them know what is currently happening with code enforcement?
We are doing a little bit. I mean, as of today, we have over 250 cases since March there. So as we're educating those residents and business owners, as I told the city manager probably about a week or so ago, we're averaging about a 30% to 40% compliance rate without a court system. Because many people just ask, like, oh, I didn't know. We're informing them of the codes that we currently have. This ordinance ties in with us from enforcement, as you saw, the enforcement staff, including the building official, building inspectors, and as staff grows, we'll probably have land development inspectors and things of that nature. So that allows them to enforce any municipal code that y'all place on the books and allows us to have that capacity. If someone did challenge the city, you know, like, what enforcement do you have?
Yeah, I just think it will be beneficial to have some type of communication campaign so that our residents are aware, just cognizant of what's happening and what's going on.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Please, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. I spoke, actually, I spoke, Councilwoman Jeffcoat, I spoke with the director yesterday. As they stand up, as he stated, I'm impressed that they've got compliance with just what we call organic education, because they're going out and they're talking to people. But to your point, I spoke with him yesterday in our weekly, bi-weekly meeting, and asked him, once he gets his staff set up, we're going to start our strategic plan for code enforcement. And part of that is that he does desire to perhaps have a town hall or a function or to go where we call on the circuit, where we go out to some homeowners associations, let people know who they are, why they're here, and inform them. So that's part of the strategy that we're going to lay out, he's working on. One, we don't want to be reactive in code enforcement. We want to have a strategic approach to address certain issues. We got orange, blue, and green buildings, and they're supposed to be brown buildings. We might attack the orange, blue, and green buildings. And that may be the strategy. But to your point, there is going to be an educational component as part of that strategy. But we tell people, Mableton now has a code enforcement team. We're here to improve the quality of life. We're not here to be Gestapo and just to try to get people in trouble. We want to bring up the standards and the looks of our city, and if people are not complying with that, then enforcement is our last resort. So yes, ma'am, to answer your question, in a long way, we are going to include in our strategy education, because our real goal is to get compliance through education. And those that are not willing to comply, then with the court, deal with them.
So the communication is running concurrently with the code enforcement?
Yes, ma'am. Once Mr. Alahad, he's taught his team...
And the educational piece, too.
Right. He has taught his team, especially right now, without a court in place, you really, you know, so he's taught the folks that that's what they're doing. They're actually going out proactively before the court's set up to let people know, we're here, you shouldn't be doing this, or you should be doing this. I was very impressed, as a matter of fact, they pulled up on a few people building structures, no permits. They stop them. He tells me, he reports, and what happens is, folks, oh, I didn't know we had to have a permit. Well, they knew, but they claim they didn't know. And then they stop them, they do a stop work order, and then for now, people comply. So that education is ongoing, but there will be a focused education strategy that Mr. Farrell will put together. Can we start going out and do that?
Can we start that education series through a city council meeting?
Absolutely. I think we've had them come out to a couple of Ms. Hawks and Ms. Hurnis.
No, no, I said a city council meeting, not a town hall.
Oh, a council meeting.
A council meeting.
Work session? Yeah, we can do a presentation.
Yeah. I would say, my suggestion would be, like, because counsel has kind of said, this is what we're doing as a part of this service.
Yes, sir.
We're explaining what the service is, and then start to do those...
Yeah, we can schedule some of these, some of the presentations.
Just like we did with SWB.
Yes, sir.
Just kind of saying, hey, we're starting it from here and go on.
Got it. We'll put it on one day of work sessions.
Yes, sir. We can do that. And to your point, Mayor Protem Jeffcoat, we will definitely work in with the city manager's office. Some of the reason, remember when I started, I said we're doing 90 days. So we're about 45 days of true active service, I guess, for code enforcement since we started on March 3rd. So we're trending in the direction, and working with the city manager on the municipal court side. Like I stated earlier, courts will probably start, you know, let's just say, midsummer-ish, somewhere in there. Again, I think we're headed in the right direction. So it's just a matter of education. Of course, even before we get that court piece stood up fully from my side, we will definitely make sure they're educated, because we want, we don't want, we want to bring in the more egregious people into court, you know. And to the citizens' concerns about veterans' war, I assure you, that is probably one of my focus areas. Maybe not changing the businesses, working with Mr. Hughes and his team, but making sure that they are compliant with whatever current zoning conditions that they're set forth on those properties, you know, no matter what type of business it is. So those are the things that we will be doing. So, you know, you may start seeing businesses start screening properties and painting buildings, but that's part of our efforts, you know, from an education standpoint as well. On the residential side, we've done a great deal of work, so thus far.
And just to wrap it up, my comment or my question about the hand-delivering of the citation, it says whenever possible and practical in the ordinance, and she said 234, but I think she meant 243. Are we only bound by the capability to deliver a citation, to only able to hand-deliver a citation?
No, sir.
So we can email, we can meet all different ways that we can...
But not email.
Not email.
Yeah, I wouldn't say email doesn't meet legal due process standards, but certainly certified mail or mail to the registered agent.
So just sending it to the person who is sitting at the, at the location is not necessarily delivering it to the violator?
Well, one, they would need to use a reasonable means to determine that the person they're giving it to is actually the violator. And if they cannot make that determination, then it would not be considered reasonable or practical to give it to that person. So at that point, I would exercise just more diligence in determining who the actual violator is, and then use the certified mail option.
And so the way, the way our codes are written, we actually are part of the International Property Management's Code, and it states whoever has control and custody of the property, who has a financial interest in the property. So with that being said, it does give me latitude. You know, say I come to your business or as a tenant, he or she may not be the one that can, you know, fix the roof, because they're just a tenant, but I've issued the citation to, on behalf of the owner, but served it and left it with Mr. Smith, who's a tenant. So if that landlord comes in and says, well, who did you leave? I left it with your tenant, Mr. Smith. Because we, the way our citations will probably be drafted, it will even show a portion where who we served it to, even though it could be, it could be administrative person in the office. If I go to the McDonald's, I may have to cite the shift manager, you know. But they're not the proprietor, you know, they're not the owner of the McDonald's, but they're the most senior person in charge when we walk in the door. So that type of approach.
Got you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any questions? Concerns?
So I just took a quick look, and it's, and it's not in the ordinance, but Madam Attorney, it says it. It may be by certified mail, statute overnight delivery, return receipt requested, hand-delivered by a code enforcement officer or another person designated by the local governing body, and you may leave a notice at the violator's usual place of residence or business, or a person residing, if it's a residential for anyone over 15 years of age, and this is part of Georgia Code 36-74-29. Is that something that should be incorporated to satisfy Councilman Ferguson's question?
So we should have that in here.
That's in here, definitely.
Yeah, it should be in here, because I remember alluding to that.
Yep.
Yes, if you look at subsection 243B.
Yeah, 243.
And that's going to be the certified mail, A, and then the person over 15 years of age would be C. The location of a motor vehicle, recreational vehicle, boat, trailer, et cetera, would be B. In the case of commercial premises, by leaving with the manager or receptionist, would be D.
So Councilman Ferguson, do you not find that sufficient?
I believe so, based off of everything I've heard so far, yeah.
Okay. Great. Anyone else have any questions or comments for attorney or our code enforcement director on this item? Hearing none, thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
Should he stay up there for the next one?
Yeah, this is Article 3, actually. So this is the first read of the ordinance updating Chapter 10, Article 3. And so, Madam Attorney, do you want to intro this ordinance as well?
Yeah, so these are actually updates to your current zoning code, and that's going to be, as the mayor indicated, Chapter 10. So this is your review and decision-making body portion of the code. And if you look at the ordinance that's in the agenda and that's published, the adjustments are in track changes. And these, these adjustments were made after consultation with at least one member of the Planning Commission, who is currently serving on the, or who was currently, or who was serving on Cobb County's Planning Commission. And their input was just, there were certain hurdles that they were confronted with in serving for Cobb County, so they asked us to provide clarity to some of those hurdles. For example, subsection 2 says, if a planning commission member moves outside of the city and/or the district of their appointing council member, they shall be automatically resigned from the Board of Appeals.
So my, my question to that is, how do we know?
Well, if you find out, it's going to be automatic.
So if you find out, but there's nothing that says that they have to tell us?
I don't think that's unusual. We're at a place for many other provisions.
Say again?
I don't think that's unusual for many other provisions. I mean, if you move outside of your district...
You need to tell somebody that you moved outside of the district.
I think that's...
Yeah, I can certainly add that. If there's no objection, I can add that they have a burden or a duty responsibility to advise the council.
Yeah, because I'm, I love all of my appointees, but I don't necessarily know where they live and what their, their housing status is on a daily basis. So they could definitely move outside of my district, and I have no idea unless they come to me and specifically state it. And I guess I'm just bringing it up because I don't want me to be at issue that somebody has moved outside of my district and they're still serving, and I didn't know and I didn't tell somebody.
No, absolutely. Consider it done. So if you turn the page, page 3, at the first regular meeting in January, we changed that to state annually, the Planning Commission shall by majority vote of its membership, elect one of its members to serve as chairperson. And this just gives them more flexibility, and it ensures that if they're not ready at the first regular meeting, that they do have the discretion to push that back as a body, as far as selection of their, their chair. Let's see.
And are they to serve, so Section 3, or Section 1031, Paragraph 3, it talks about serve concurrently with their appointing council member's term of office and until a successor is appointed. So is that when they are sworn into office or when they're elected into office? So if I'm not elected for a second term in November, somebody else has been elected, does their appointment end then, or does it end in January, February, March, whenever that they're, they are, the new person is sworn in?
Yeah, so they would serve concurrently with, like, if we were using you for an example, they would serve concurrently with your term, but upon the end of your term, it would be incumbent on the next council member who replaced you to appoint someone else. And this just says that they will continue to serve until that appointment's made, so that they're, we won't risk losing a quorum between council members.
Okay.
And if you flip over, you can see Page 3, Subsection D, Recommendations. They just wanted, or she wanted clarity that the discussion can include certain people, so this was just a clarification here, that they'll take staff recommendations into consideration, that they will be able to... So previously, there were three things they could do. They could approve, they could deny, or they could approve with revised conditions separate than what was recommended by staff. And the request was to change this to say that they could approve with or without staff conditions, they could defer with reasons specified, or they could deny. And then if you look at the subsection immediately following that, it gives them the ability to postpone making a recommendation to city council for no more than 40 days. I had a month initially, but the request was to extend to 40 days, which is an additional 10 days. And then the same changes, if you look at subsection 1032, were applied to the Board of Zoning Appeals, particularly with respect to the automatic resignation if a appointee or if a member moves outside of the assigned or their appointed district. And I will similarly make the adjustment here, that the BZA would also have that requirement to report to the council any relocation outside of district.
So last question, last two questions I have, they, where'd it go? Oh, dog, and I missed, I lost it. So the subsection 6, so what is that? 1032A, no, B6. So is that at the first regular meeting, or is that annually, as was stated above?
That would be annually. So the change would be to remove it from the first annual and make it annually.
Okay, so we have to, so change that wording, and then...
Wait, wait, so it should be already changed, so I may not know what section you're referring to. Can you, what page are you looking at?
Oh, it's page 5?
Okay, I was looking at page 3, so let me go to 5 right quick. Okay, so I'm on page 5, and you said which subsection?
Number 6.
So I could make it mutual. That was just a request by the Planning Commission to have more flexibility. I could give BZA more flexibility there, too. So if there's no objection, I will give BZA the flexibility to appoint their chair annually versus the first meeting in January.
I just want to make sure that we're, you know, we're consistent, and I just saw that above, so I wanted to ask that question.
Yeah, I believe that's all the changes that were requested. Yes, so what will happen moving forward is that this has been published, or I've asked staff to publish this in the legal organ to provide the public notice that the council is making these changes. And that's just because, one, with zoning decisions, it's always good to provide notice, which is why the state statute requires it. And then, so at your May 6 Planning Commission meeting, the public will have the ability to give public comments on this, if anyone wants to come and participate on May 6. The Planning Commission thereafter will have the opportunity to review this as a body, because these suggestions were made by one person in particular. So it gives them also the opportunity as a body to tell you whether or not they support these changes. And then after the public hearing, it will come back to you for adoption, and then you'll have the recommendation at that point. And then you can give me additional changes as may be recommended by the Planning Commission, or you can adopt as-is.
So I remember, this was my last question. The, the notice period that they have, just, this is just my edification, is it three days as well? 72 hours or whatever, like we have for ours?
D, for the open meetings?
Yes.
Yeah, they are subject to the same open meeting requirements as the city.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel, or comments on this ordinance? Hearing none, we're going to move on. If you follow the paper copy of the, of the agenda, this is item 12... If you follow the paper copy of the, of the agenda, this is item 12C where we're at now, which is the first reading ordinance creating Article IV, which is outdoor lighting standards under chapter 10 of the Planning and Zoning for the City of Mableton ordinances. We have our Sustainability, Waste and Beautification Director Emily Groff, who's here, and I think our city manager is going to speak to this. And then we have, I think, two other items, and that our sustainability director will be speaking to as well. So whoever wants to--
You can briefly do it if you like it.
Okay. So this is actually a recommendation, Emily's recommendation. This is modeled, so this will be your outdoor lighting standards, also known as your night sky ordinance. And this is modeled off of the City of Atlanta's Night Sky Ordinance, and it just sets forth outdoor lighting standards. It creates a new Article IV under your chapter 10, Planning and Zoning. I have, because some of the provisions in here seem to somewhat relate to land use, just out of caution, I put it under your Planning and Zoning section, and I've asked community development to also put this on for a public hearing, to go before the planning commission. So this is similar to your last item. You will get recommendations from the planning commission on this. And then it basically just sets forth outdoor lighting standards, conformance with applicable codes, the applicability. It's a lot of technical language in here that I won't get into, but it includes maximum foot candles, minimum foot candles, just lighting standards, and special uses, lighting requirements, security lighting, pedestrian path lighting, architectural accent lighting, temporary lighting permits for people who want to have lighting that exceeds certain foot candles, that they would be required to come to the city for a temporary permit. And then commercial parking areas and streetlights, it has lighting requirements there. It has a process for variances, where those variances would go through your Board of Zoning Appeals. And then it has submission and plans of evidence and compliance requirements. So that's essentially this ordinance. So as I said, it would go before the planning commission on May 6. It would come back to you. You'd have their recommendations. And then we have Emily, who's before you today, who can also give you additional input on this.
And this applies to both residential and commercial?
Yes, so specifically the applicability, if you go to subsection 1045, it says, "For all land uses developments and buildings that require a permit."
Okay.
And Emily, the floor is yours.
Mr. Mayor--
Yes, sir.
If I may sometimes just put some of this stuff in context, this is the kind of stuff that would stop a neighbor from putting a baseball field in their backyard with big old bright lights, and keep the other neighbor up all night because they want to do it because they own the land. These type of things happens. People do things that are just disturbing to our environment or to other neighbors. Folks think they can just put halogen lights up because they want them, and they may be blasting in somebody else's window, and this type of ordinance, not only perfects the environment, which Emily explained, but also makes sure we keep a real nice community for our citizens.
So, and I get that, and that's my, while my question is going to be, while this night sky is wonderful, are we also going to do the same thing for my night ears? So that we're doing the same for noise ordinance?
Yes, sir.
It's coming up.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I think city attorney and city manager, I agree with their briefing. The other intent of this is to have a night sky ordinance will beef up our application for green communities.
Any other questions, counsel? All right, hearing none, we're going to move to the next item here, which is item, which, if you're following along, this 12D, which is the first reading ordinance creating Article II, which is a new article on tree preservation and beautification under chapter 11, which is our environmental, environment and natural resources, that includes tree preservation and the replacement standards exhibit of the Mableton Code of Ordnances. Again, Emily, would you like to speak directly to this item?
Yeah, let's see, the attorney brief us as well.
Thank you. Madam Attorney?
Yes, and this is another item that Emily Groff has been tremendous in helping to just review this and make sure it conforms to what, you know, her opinion would be, the needs specific to Mableton. So that is one of the benefits of having an in-house subject matter expert who can contribute and make those recommendations. So basically, this would create Article II Tree Preservation under chapter 11, chapter 11 of your Code of Ordnances, chapter 11 being your Environmental and Natural Resources Code. So just a brief overview, it goes over the enforcement mechanisms, the scope and exemptions. For example, activities in trees that are exempt from the requirements of the ordinance are removal of trees posing an imminent threat under emergency conditions, or trees removed or pruned by a utility company as part of routine vegetation management activities, et cetera. It provides a definition section. The administer of the tree ordinance would be the city manager or his or her designee. It has permit requirements, permitting procedures, variances, appeal and administrative procedures, removal and replacement of trees, density requirements, inspection requirements, maintenance and fiscal surety requirements, process and procedure for notice of compliance. It gives the city the teeth to issue stop-work orders in the event of noncompliance. It deals with suspension, revocation, and modification of any permits that are issued, and civil penalties for noncompliance. It gives alternative compliance mechanisms. It establishes a Tree Preservation and Beautification Fund, which is one of the beautiful components of this ordinance, that the money that is put in here goes back towards the community for beautification and tree preservation purposes. And then it also establishes a tree banking system that is within the city's discretion. You are a newer city, so you, this could take some time to actually get it in the way that you want it, but it does give you the legislative capacity at the time that administration feels that it is ready to move forward to actually establish that list of registered tree bank sites. And that's essentially the ordinance. The request would be, well, actually, there is another component of it. If you look at subsection, if, well, if you flip the page, this ordinance adopts the Tree Preservation and Replacement Standards--
The standard.
And these standards are enumerated on the back of, as an attachment to this ordinance. And then it just goes through additional standards, additional definition sections, density factors, so it provides guidance to developers as they attempt to adhere to your tree preservation requirements. And it gives that, those, that technical guidance and those technical standards. And then just keep in mind that you are a new city, so as you go along, as every city does, every city across the state of Georgia constantly amends their codes. They constantly change it to evolving needs, to community needs, to community input. So your code will be fluid. So as administration implements these processes, they may find that, you know what, this model, although it's a great model, we can make it a little bit more specific to Mableton. And when you have those opportunities, I always encourage administration to bring ordinances back for amendment. So just keep in mind, when you adopt this, it's not set in stone, and you do have the capacity throughout your existence as a city to update and enhance and make changes. And Emily, if you have anything additional, or if you guys have any questions of me or Emily.
Counsel, any questions?
Just a comment about, just keep in mind about staffing requirements for city arborists or landscape architects.
Yeah, that came up before, right?
Yeah, I was going to, actually, myself and Emily have discussed that. And what we're going to do is obviously consult with the city attorney, look at some of the best practices that Emily is in touch with on other cities, how they're handling this. And at the big picture, we're not trying to discourage developers, a lot of this to go through community development. From planting trees, we want them to replace canopies, but when replacing a canopy is impractical, an arborist states that they're just, the trees are going to die because of lack of sun location, that's where we may have to go either contract, or we're set up an IGA with an arborist, or have someone on a retainer, or in a contract that we can call on an as-needed basis to make a determination for. So there will be a place where we have to consider where an arborist may come in, where there may be a debate between the developer, and we have a professional opinion from an arborist that said, them placing these trees here is probably just a waste of time because they're going to die within six months. And so we would want a professional arborist to give us our opinion on that. So we have considered, we haven't considered how we would fund that. We haven't definitely thought about a full-time, because I don't think this happens frequently enough for a full-time person, but having somebody accessible to give us opinion when needed, is something we've discussed, where we'll be considering.
Budget seasons, I just wanted to lay on yours.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Yes, a matter of fact, Ms. Emily has made me aware that we need to, Karen's not here, we need to account for the need of an arborist in that, in the camp. I think this also helps, Emily, does this help towards our, the green--
Yes, green communities and Tree City USA certification as well.
Counsel, any other questions, comments?
I continue to say, what has Emily been doing since she got here? I mean, I never hear from her.
That's fine, because you see the results here in the work, so some people don't need to be heard because they do the work.
This is awesome, thank you.
It's absolutely fine. All right, counsel, we're going to move on to item 12E, which is the first reading ordinance creating Article III, which is noise under chapter 13, which is the nuisance violations under the city, New City Code of Ordnances.
I guess it helps to read.
So, Madam Attorney, do you want to enter this?
Yes, Mayor, so this is actually creating your chapter 13 nuisances, particularly your Article III noise. And this, Al, your code enforcement director, has been tremendously helpful in just helping to give feedback and to help guide and put this in place. So it's a basic noise ordinance. Code enforcement in particular, you know, would be responsible for the enforcement. We all know, particularly when I say we, I mean administration and people who have been working intimately with the city, we comprehend the need to have this in place, because you previously had someone who sent one of the council members an email, just very upset with noise, what they consider to be noise violations, and they were saying they're going to come to the council and, you know, let the council know they're unhappy with its enforcement of this. And I quickly responded and said, "This is regulated by the county. You know, Mableton did not put this together, but it is something that the county, that the council is taking into consideration." So this is one of the ordinances that you definitely need to have in place. So it just sets sound level limitations. It includes prohibited contact, prohibited conduct, and has definitions to give just guidance on just, you know, what the intent is here, and what the restrictions pertain to specifically. It gives restricted uses and activities, enforcement procedures, procedures for determining sound levels, special variances, et cetera. So the request would be to review this for first read, and to move forward with having this come back on a later agenda prior to the completion of transition for adoption. And then if you have any questions, Al is here, and I can answer questions as well. And Al, if you have anything to add, feel free.
No, just to note, thank you, Madam Attorney, that we're starting to receive noise complaints. Some of the things that we will enforce, because I understand this also ties into allowing the police to enforce local noise issues. I just let y'all know, we don't get into the house parties and all that, we get into more like construction noise, waste haulers coming in the middle of the night, things of that nature primarily. But we will assist and or try to facilitate some of those other concerns. So, you know, because, again, people are going to have a Super Bowl party, it's about to be graduation seasons, or, you know, cookouts and all that kind of stuff, but those will really be deferred to the police department or the local law enforcement agency primarily.
Fireworks?
Yeah.
Fireworks?
Fireworks. I believe, Madam Attorney, it does talk about fireworks.
It does, yeah, before 10:30.
Fireworks is regulated by the Fire Marshal's Office here, which we have adopted in our IGA Cobb County Fire Department. And so they have a countywide, as a matter of fact, the state law, they have a countywide fireworks. So I think that would automatically fall under us, or they would enforce that.
It's on the ordinance, though.
Can you tell me which section in particular, and then I can give--
It's five?
Yeah, I believe you put the state information in there based on--
Prohibited conduct?
Page five?
Page, page number's not there.
No, it's not.
Well, it's like 102, or, or what subsection?
Yeah, section 1332, sound level limitations, and two pages down, it talks about--
It says--
Use of or ignition of fireworks.
Yeah, it does say, "No fireworks after 10:30."
Number five.
Yeah, no fireworks.
Can I go to the next page over?
On any day before, before 10:00 a.m. or after 10:30 p.m. at night.
Yes, so what this basically says is it sets parameters for firework-related noise, and it provides an exception to do otherwise if you are expressly permitted by Georgia law.
I do have a question unrelated to fireworks. I get a couple of noise complaints a couple of times a month in my subdivision, and how are we educating, again, just back to the education question, about the rules? Because I just saw on here that your neighbor cannot have a lawnmower running before 7:00 a.m. in the morning, which I've heard in my, in my community, or after 7:00 p.m. at night. So a lot of people are not aware of this, because I literally just saw that. So I think that goes back to the education plan and, you know, strategic plan that we need to put together. And my second question is, looking at this, I didn't see anything about another common noise complaint I get, which is the dogs cannot stop barking. Do we have any plans for that?
Yeah, so normal procedures, if you're at your home cutting your grass since eight o'clock at night, we're probably, I mean, you, we're really going after more the commercial type businesses, like you've hired a landscaper to come cut your grass, he or she should know those things. But, I mean, the typical homeowner, you know, because I know you may just, hey, I work, you know, 12 hours a day, this is the only time I can cut it, you know, within reason, but we also, you know, educate them, as you stated. But we will do an education process with that to address those things, you know, because I know it talks about, you know, even sounds on vehicles, and those are still police matters and things of that nature. In regards to the animal vocalizations, I believe it does speak of that, if I remember correctly, Attorney, it talked about animal vocalizations? I know we were talking about it.
I don't see any animal or pets.
So they would just have to, if they meet the noise level--
Okay.
Then they would be restricted. If they don't, if the animal doesn't meet the noise level, then they wouldn't be restricted.
That's, if I may, Mr. Mayor, that's pretty impractical to enforce, because you gotta, I think, you might have to have a decimeter, somebody have, if you go in, let me back into this.
And they usually have recordings, so I think that would help.
Yeah. If I'm bringing you in court, there's going to be a standard that says you have violated a noise, and that's a certain measurement of a decibel, and you got to have a certain piece of equipment, somebody's got to catch it, it's got to be recorded at your-- Somebody's gotta catch it, it's gotta be recorded that you exceeded that. So to Al's point, and I think he's handling this very wisely, most of that is where you're going. When we do some of our town halls, when we do some of our council meets, every once in a while, he can print pamphlets and say, "Did you know these things are in violation of our ordinances?" And sometimes, the best approach to these are educating folks. Now, if my next-door neighbor has a dog that's barking all the time, and they don't handle it, I can eventually pull in some type of enforcement, whether it be through police department, animal service, code enforcement, and just irritate it. But I've rarely seen someone come into court because the neighbor, it's normally just a conversation between two neighbors and code enforcement starts coming and saying, "Hey, if you keep it up, we're gonna, you know, we gotta do something." But it is hard to catch them dogs barking, unless you
And, and the provision itself says domesticated animals may not make any vocalizations for more than 10 minutes without interruption, or more than 30 minutes if intermittent.
And, and that's the standard. That is the standard, even if you have an animal, which we will have an animal-type control ordinance of some sort. And that is the standard, and I can speak on professional experience. Literally had to go stand at somebody's house, roll the window down, and record them having dogs bark for 30 minutes, you know. And then determine with the city attorney, was this a violation of the code? Because then we had to look, and then we got into more technical stuff, because it was a type of breed, which was a hunter-type dog, so when they let it outside, it sees birds, it sees squirrels, it's doing what? Doing what it's supposed to do, bark and chase.
But to that point, so, and, and I love picking on Councilwoman Ock. So if her chickens are out there making noise, does that fall into the same ordinance?
I would say potentially it could, but we deal with, we don't allow roosters, that's what I'm looking at. That's what I'm going to address. Roosters are, that's a totally different, you know, a chicken, I may or may not hear, I'm assuming a chicken, you know, if I'm standing, because we're gonna measure from the property line anyway. That is the protocol, so.
And, and then it says, "The provision shall not apply if the chief of police..." So this talks about from the chief of police level. So are we talking, like, are we actually talking sheriffs? Are we talking Cobb County Police Department? Like, who is that?
Okay, so, so my recommendation would be, you are in process of putting in place an animal control agreement that deals with barking animals and deals with nuisance animals. My recommendation would be to utilize that agreement for the enforcement, so that the enforcement is consistent with what, with how the county enforces this.
So wait to really say what we're gonna say here until we get that done, is that what you're saying?
Well, that's, that's gonna be coming in the near future. We've exchanged documents, we've had multiple discussions with the county, county attorneys, staff on it.
Again, my question is, wait for this one until that one is done?
Um, so technically, this one is not going to start until you have responsibility, which would be the end of transition, unless I'm asked by code to place it sooner than that. So, your animal control ordinance will start the same date that the noise ordinance starts. And until then, it's the county's responsibility anyway. So my recommendation would be to utilize the animal process to address barking animals, because you do, it is going to be difficult to go out with, you know, the decibel counter and try to catch when this dog is barking. And that's just not really practical when the resident can record the dog barking and then give it to the county, and the county can then issue citations, take them to court. It appears that this, this process pays for itself, because the county, there is no fee. Your animal control agreement does not have a fee assessed to it. So it's funded by the general fund as well as revenue that's collected off of fines and assessments. So I do know that the county intends to, and they're contractually agreeing to be, or they are agreeing to be contractually obligated to continue to utilize these processes within the city of Mableton.
So just because I have ulterior motives, is this a function of the Cobb County Police Department or the Cobb County Sheriff?
Okay. If we have an ordinance that's a city ordinance, that's not a state, and I'll defer to attorneys, that's not some criminal law. If it's a city ordinance, our code enforcement has the ability to enforce that. Now, parking, that gets into that little gray area where, I mean, can, can Al go and cite somebody for parking, that's a traffic violation, that may be something the county, you know that. So you get into a lot of these lines, your question, some of this stuff is gonna be situational, and then he'll have the discretion to make. But let's ask you a question. The sheriff is not going to get involved with enforcing any animal services. And I can tell y'all now, Cobb County Animal Services will not come out, and I'm just, they spend more time locking up violent pets that have bitten someone, or that are loose pets that are running around, or dead pets that are in the street, and they get occupied with that. It is gonna be, I'm just gonna keep it real. If your neighbor got a barking dog, you pretty much, your, your one recourse is to go there and tell them, "You need to stop your dog from barking," and have a discussion with them. It would require, if Al was to take someone, if our director was to take someone to court, this is the city attorney, you better have beyond a shadow of a doubt proof that they violated that ordinance. And that requires a decimeter, it's pretty impractical. I was saying?
Like frequency, like, because people look at random times of the day, random times of the week.
So what I'm saying, Ms. Ferguson, yes, we have this written there, and most times, this is applied when we have what you call a very unusual situation, where we can pull up this ordinance and say, "Okay, you got a dog that's barking 24 hours a day, every day, the whole neighbor's complaining. I now have an ordinance that I can go after you with, and then we would apply it." But the average dog that's running out, somebody just don't like a dog, or stuff like that, you don't see most enforcement teams start chasing that, that's a rabbit trail, just being honest. So who enforces that? If it's a city ordinance, and it's not some state or criminal thing, our code enforcement has the ability to leverage. If you're getting involved with an animal that needs to be picked up, we're gonna call animal services. They're not qualified to be picking up an animal, taking it to the shelter. If a dog needs to be put in for rabies, the animal shelter comes and that. But barking, Cobb Animal Services, we might write it in there.
Well, so what their process is currently, Cobb's process, is they have a group of animal control officers who are specifically designated to enforce the animal control code. So, a person would make a complaint, we should first direct them to animal control if it's an animal-related complaint. That would be my recommendation, to direct them to animal control. To, at that point, when a complaint is made with animal control, Cobb's Animal Control, the officers have a responsibility to investigate and to mitigate or abate the issue. Now, how good they do that, I'm not aware. Whether they ignore animal complaints, I don't know. So I don't know if they're fantastic with this process, I don't know if they're lacking with this process. But I do know that they have a process in place for, if you make a complaint, for it to be investigated by an animal service officer.
And, so, I'm sorry, I always often hate that I, like, start in some way, go ahead, ask your question.
I'm just done when you're finished.
Go ahead, please, ask your question.
I just had a real quick question, it's gonna take a half a second probably.
Yes, ma'am.
With human-produced noise, will Mableton be enforcing, like, say, people who play music outside of the grocery stores and stuff? Is that a Mableton thing, or some?
Yes, we can. I mean, you know, but we will work with you being the counsel, of course, the city manager's office to see. Because there may be, even working with zoning, they may be having a special promotion, right? You know, or a special event. So hopefully, they're going through the process, which will talk about, or speak to, like, "Hey, we're planning to have someone on a bullhorn, we're having them go out of business, or whatever the case may be." You know, but ultimately, if it is something done, quote-unquote, illegally, we would address that individual and say, "Hey, this is what our ordinance is, this is the process. If you want to do this, you know, and at least, please refrain from doing that, you know, continue with your sale," or, you know, things of that nature. Of course, of course, we also have to look at freedom of speech and things of that nature as well. So, you know, we, you know, we look at, as the city manager, there's, there's certain nuances to every situation.
I was talking primarily of the people, you know, who are playing their violins and their, you know, kind of
Let me, if I may ask, let me tell, let me tell you what really happens. It's eight o'clock, nine o'clock at night, code enforcement's at home. What happens, somebody's playing that loud music next door, they got a party, they, after 11 o'clock, they violated the noise ordinance, one of, most times, people gonna call 911. Police show up, police come to the door, they don't have a noise decibel, they show up and say, "Hey, cut it down, you're violating ordinance." If you get a repeat offender that keeps doing that, then our code enforcement team could probably go out and try to do something. And again, I don't wanna get into too many details, but he does, there's so many nuances to some of these, what I call gray areas. When you're talking, but if, if your neighbor, and this has happened to all of us, they have a big old party, you're supposed to have the music off at 11 o'clock, somebody's playing that violin, trying to raise money or whatever they're doing, they're doing something there, and they are violating the noise ordinance. Chances are, what happens, you call 911, especially if it's after five or six o'clock. Al's team will most likely not be able to go and, and, and check into it. Police show up, they're gonna tell them, "Shut it down." And folks will, literally typically, they follow the law. But if we have a repeat offender and somebody could cause, then that would come to our, our code enforcement team, and they may make a visit and explain the rules. And then that kind of, what I call soft enforcement, normally gets compliance. But some of these are tough, and I'm not gonna sit here and promise y'all that all of a sudden, we got a code enforcement, everybody's gonna be quiet, the dogs are gonna stop barking, and the noise is gonna go away. These are pretty hard to enforce. We will make effort when you see violators and egregious acts that are just going way out of the norm. But most times, this is a simple conversation that says, "We have an ordinance that you're violating, you need to stop." And people will comply.
And, and that's, that's what I can concur with, what the city manager is stating. In many cases, even with animal vocalization, it's just us giving them a copy of the ordinance. Say, "Hey, did you know, we got a complaint, we can't substantiate, but we got a complaint about a dog, a party, here's the hours, have a good day." You know, and then you're always gonna have someone that, I guess, books the system, I guess. But, you know, we, we come across those, but those are very rare, honestly.
So, I hate when I, like, kinda start us down a rabbit hole and then we continue down that rabbit hole for 20 minutes. Well, my original question was more geared towards, regardless of whether or not it is an animal or some other issue with this ordinance. My question still remains, is it that we're calling Cobb County Police Department or the Cobb County Sheriff?
Police.
They will call 911, and the police comes out.
The police department will come out.
And, 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 no, and
Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, y'all. Oh, sorry, all right. Yeah, you call 911, maybe non-emergency.
Because Al's not coming to call 911.
I mean, unless it's something egregious, and I will come out, of course.
Now, I would imagine that 911, if someone calls about a barking dog, they would probably declare that to be non-emergency and direct them to animal control. The animal control officers, if they, if it substantiated that the dog is an issue, then they would issue a citation, and those citations go before the Cobb magistrate court. If it's an emergency, then, you know, I would always call 911.
I would venture to say that we're, we're talking about the administering of this versus the actual code or violations. So, I think, I think those things can come out as to who's responding to what and how they're responding. I think our focus, at least now to this second read, is what's, what are the actual violations that we're looking at? And if they are acceptable to the members of the council, and then by virtue of them, through the actual citizens they represent. So, if there is any updates or changes to this ordinance that council members want to see, please make sure it makes its way to the city attorney. If there's specific questions on those, or if they're, you know, I think what the city manager has alluded to as well, there will be, there will be violations or, or parameters in the ordinance. How they are enforced, if they're enforced, when they're enforced, is a separate, separate issue totally. Also, the city manager has stated, there may be things that we have in our zoning, or, I'm sorry, in our ordinance here that may also be in the county ordinance in another fashion, specifically talking about animal control. Calling the police is always an option to anybody who feels threatened, and we will handle that with an IGA with the county as well. And, and then they can sort it out from there. I mean, I, I deal with these issues all the time, I have people calling about dogs. And whether they're trying to escape their gates, or people are scared to go outside. And to the city manager's point, sometimes people show up and sometimes they don't exactly. But I would always say if they feel a concern, especially if there's some, if they feel some threat to their bodily harm or something, call the police, they'll sort it out.
Call 911, and they'll sort it out.
Call 911, yes. With that being said, Counsel, I would greatly appreciate if we could move on to item 12F.
So, the last question I have about E is to you, do you think it covers everything it needs to cover?
Yes, sir, I mean, it gives us the ability to enforce those issues when needed. It also gives the citizenry an understanding of how we enforce it. You know, because it talks about the decibel levels, I mean, just to give you an example, a lawnmower's about 70 dBs on average. You know, a rock concert is like 120. So, people can sit here and say, "Oh, it's loud," you know, because, you know, as the city manager stated, you know, sensory issues and things of that nature. So now, we can, you know, we'll, I will be ordering a sound meter this week, we'll have it, we'll have a light meter as well, so we can read all those type of things. And we tell them exactly, it shows us how, the process for everyone, so.
Thank you, Director Pearl, we appreciate your time this evening. Moving on to item 12F, this is a second read, this is a consideration of ordinance creating Chapter 6, which is our municipal court of the city of Mableton. This is the second read, we had the pleasure of, of working through this ordinance at a previous meeting. Madam Attorney, anything you want to add? First off, the question I would ask, has anything changed since the first reading as it relates to the language of this ordinance, or proposed ordinance?
So there have been changes. The city manager was able to get subject matter feedback by someone who operates and works and deals with courts. That has been incorporated. My request would be if this can be deferred, can we defer this one meeting? Well, can we defer this until next meeting, or were you, were you wanting to adopt this tonight?
I don't, I think my next move would be the hiring, and the ordinance kind of describes the position, but I've addressed that in the paying class, so it's not required, we can defer it.
Okay.
Because we already have the position in?
What I've done is adjust the paying class to reflect what's in the ordinance. But now, if the council approves the paying class, I don't have to wait for the ordinance to be approved, we can work on that. So yes, yes, Madam Attorney, we can defer it.
Can we see the changes that were made, please?
So I did not make the changes, and I don't know if they, I think I was told that they inadvertently did not do track changes. Because I
Yeah, I'll, and I'll, I think I get, I'll get a list of the changes. I have a connection with a subject matter expert.
I don't know the identity, I think Councilwoman Oladipo wants to know if we made the changes.
The person would like to remain anonymous, because there are personnel issues. We can talk about in executive session.
Can we get the track changes when we bring this back for the second read?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
I would like that.
So assuming, well, what we could do is if they just absolutely don't have capability of getting the track changes, we could just ask them.
We, we can get the track changes. And they'll show, most of them just show some recent changes in laws, and I think I may have sent you some of those laws that are, there are recent laws that have been changed at the legislative level, that you have to make sure you have certain titles and certain things. I think it's this language, I think myself and the city attorney have talked about, do you have a judge pro temp, or is, or is an associate judge? Little stuff like that, is just make sure you're compliant. But I'll get the track changes and get them to the city attorney. From what the subject matter expert did say, is that the city attorney did, she can say, "Good, she's had a great job with this ordinance." And so these are very minor, I'm talking language and technical tweaks.
And I'm just gonna ask the question, playing Angel's advocate, are there changes that we want to see were or were not made to the document, or is it just in?
I, I don't know until we can, until we can see it.
We'll, we'll get the changes, she's gonna defer it, and I'll make sure the changes are noticeable.
Look, the reality is, if you, if you can't get, if you can't get the track changes, we have the original version, we have that version, just do a diff on it, it's, it's simple, we don't have to exacerbate that.
Can I make a motion to defer this item then to our next meeting?
Yes, ma'am, please do so. Motion's been made and duly seconded. All is in favor of deferring.
All those in favor of deferring this ordinance until next meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. We're gonna move on to item 12G, which is a consideration and approval of resolution amending the pay and class plan that we have approved and updated several times. Mr. Manager, you just alluded to some changes. Would you please just give us a delta of the changes that's made and the reasons because of that?
Yes, sir. One, when we were looking at the judge, another subject matter expert in our circle of network, HR person, the city manager, we are asking the council to remove the city manager's pay from the paying class because the charter says the council shall decide the pay of the city manager, it's not determined by a paying class chart. And that came up because we were looking at putting a judge on here, but because the judge is contracted, those are council decisions. And so even though you can kind of have a range, it's not necessarily be on paying class. This paying class is for me to use, once you approve, when we do job offers to employees, I have that range then based on what you have set to pay on. I'm not gonna pick or pay for myself. That's something you all do. So that would be the only position on that whole in paying class that I really, that would be nice if I could go into paying class and say, hey, I will go all the way up to the top of the class, you know, but that's not gonna happen.
All right, so, City Manager, real quick, I don't see the actual judge.
No, because it's a contracted position.
He's just talking, that's what he's talking about.
The city manager.
So can I ask my question?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Is the.
Well, he was still going through.
Yeah.
So the ask for him was to go through each one and the delta, to explain what the delta was for each one. So he's only, he's only got to the first one thus far.
Right. City manager has, paying class has been removed, if council approves. The next one is the finance, we've moved the public, we've moved the public relations coordinator from the communications department to the office of the mayor under the chief of staff. No, no impact there financially. We have what we had when I set up these with the council's approval, we had a accounting and finance manager. The finance director has, would like to change that title, no pay change, but just change the title from accounting finance manager to the deputy finance director, because we believe we have a very competent number two that can carry on. The accounting, the finance director has also stated, instead of accounting clerk, she's recommending finance analyst, no pay change in pay there, but just change in title. And then as I continue down the list, we've added the three positions that are currently in the ordinance. We had a court administrator, but we've also had a, we put municipal, because we're gonna have a municipal court, that's the court, the city will have municipal court administrator, municipal clerk of court, and a municipal court clerk. Now, Mr. Ferguson, I know you asked the difference. The court administrator is similar to the director, that's appointed by the council. That's the boss of the court when court is not in session. When the court's in session, the judge is the boss. The clerk of court, like our city clerk, that's the records keeper. You gotta have someone to keep court records, they are important. And that term court clerk is really, that's another term for executive assistant or administrative assistant.
I mean, the titles are very confusing. Do we want to change it to court EA or something?
I'm sorry, yeah, yes, yeah, you don't call them court EA.
Those are standardized terms, they may not mean a lot to us, it may sound confusing, but in the world of municipal court, they know exactly what they mean. There's literally associations, these are careers that people have. So I don't want to entertain arbitrarily changing folks' titles.
They care about the title, got it.
Oh, it's actually, some of this stuff is mandated by law. You have to have a certain role, it's in an ordinance too. You can't call them a court director. I mean, clerk, you go to, these people run for office, court administrator, superior court, they're not directors, they're actually court administrators. And a clerk, city clerk, you know if I call a record keeper or a secretary, she's called a clerk. So the clerk of court is the record keeper of court. And then you could call it an executive assistant, but it's not what it is.
Oh, no, that's okay. I mean, if it's standardized terms, then we won't have to change it.
Yes, Ms. Oladipo. And then, let's see, I think that was, those were it. Any, yes, sir, any questions?
Councilman Ferguson.
Yes. I'm not gonna ask another question.
Your question about the judge.
Yes, sir, your question was why is the judge not on here? Because the judge would be per our charter appointed, I believe by the mayor, and that salary is decided by the council, not by the paying class. That's contracted, that's a contracted position. And so you will see in here on these, the paying class, these are not, all these are full-time employees, not contracted positions.
So the bottom line is.
I say that because some of them are hourly.
Okay, let me say this, they're not, there are no, there shouldn't be contracted positions on a paying class.
And I think the reason for the change is that employees that are on the paying class, we as a, as a body, set that pay range. Once we do that, the city manager can hire anybody and pay them anywhere within that range. He does not have that ability to do that for the appointed, either appointed elected official or appointed officials of the council. So he's simply saying it does not need to be on a paying class if he does not have the ability to hire them nor determine what their pay is. So that's why he wants to remove those.
And that I understand, that wasn't my question, but I'm ready to move on.
Are you sure?
Yep, 100%.
This is a democracy.
It's 902, yep, 100%.
Thank you, sir. With that being said, at this point in time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution amending the pay and class plan.
Make a motion to approve resolution amending the pay and classification plan.
Second.
Thank you, motion's been made and duly seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the resolution to amend the pay and classification plan, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it. We'll move forward to item 12H, which is consideration and approval of resolution recognizing Georgia Cities Week, which is April 21st through April 26th. Mr. Manager, in absence of our special projects manager, if any comment you want to give to this before calling the question?
Yes, sir. I'll read my text from our special projects manager, who's actually in a leadership development program right now. The, it's, we're gonna do a staff profile, this, Cities Week is just profiling cities in Georgia. And so you have to show something unique about your city. And what Mr. Ross, he's gonna run it all day tomorrow and Friday. He's gonna do social media posts and kind of just talk about our, our staff profiles, our people and employees. Right now, we were gonna do our ribbon cutting, but timing on that didn't work. So right now, it's a staff profile and just, we're participating with all the other cities like GMA, highlighting what your city is doing special, and we're gonna highlight staff this time.
And then I also think with Georgia City Week, I mean, eventually we'll graduate to activities and things of that nature, but we're just not, not there yet, so.
Mayor, I would like to enter a motion to approve the resolution recognizing Georgia Cities Week from 21 April to 26 April, as written in the addenda.
No second.
Thank you, sir. Motion's been made and properly seconded. All those in favor of approval of resolution recognizing Georgia Cities Week being April 21st through 26th, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, thank you. And by the way, Georgia Cities Week theme this year is Imagine the Possible. All right, so with that being said, I do believe that's all of the unfinished and new business in front of the council for this evening. With that said, Mr. Manager, do you have any comments for this evening?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, first want to recognize our very own, Ms. Lily Smith. She has graduated from the inaugural Cobb Young Professionals Association, which, yeah, so.
That's pretty cool.
Once she was working in the office of the mayor, she asked permission because she developed her leadership. Mayor, of course, approved that, and she's been in the program, working hard here, and she had her graduation yesterday. So now she's got a network through Cobb County, she's building a network, so we're very proud of her. As you know, I like, Mr. Mayor, shout out our employees. I know that we don't believe in a lot of paper, but as you know, some of our HR department go out to what we call job fairs. And you should have in front of you a production of Ms. Rochelle, play lock. And I want to say we come a long way, that is our benefits book, does everyone have a copy of it? Yep, hold it, let me see that. This is the city of Mableton's benefit book, talks about our benefits, so someone wants to see about coming to work in our city. Has that QRS thing on the back, you know, that's technology, I guess.
QRAS.
Or whatever.
Super QR code.
QR code.
You're right.
That's the alphabet, I was saying, I guess. But it's really showed that you as a council believe in staff, because this is very impressive. Any potential employee that would pick this up and see that you all have a great benefits package. So I wanted to shout out the great work of Ms. Rochelle, might let her talk to Karen when we do our annual financial report. That's a pretty picture of Mableton. And then last, I'm sorry, last, Mr. Mayor, as our finance directors and I alluded to, we have officially entered into our budget season. Myself, primarily the finance director, Ms. Karen Ellis, will be working with department heads. We've pretty much got a philosophy that we're not gonna do much change in our last year's budget, we're gonna look at where people perform. We've listened to what the council said at our planning conference on some of the desires you have about enhanced roadway management and others. So we may be setting a few divisions and dealing with some other things as we continue to grow now, not in transition of service, but now in kind of in excellence in service. So you will see a budget, I think we're talking Karen, May 12th. In May, we plan to come before this council with a draft, so it can be adopted in time, officially adopted. We're hoping to have it adopted by June, June 27th, the last council meeting. So just wanted to bring it up, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Oh, we'd like to go into executive session for the purpose of real estate litigation or personnel.
Put on the mic.
Do you have any comments for us?
No, just thank you for allowing me to fill in for Ms. Susan.
I, we appreciate you gracing for your presence this evening and filling in for, for our clerk. Madam Attorney, do you have any comments this evening?
Yes, I would just request executive session for, for all purposes listed by the agenda.
Thank you.
Oh, microphone.
Councilwoman Oladipo?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start by congratulating all of our code enforcement officers and building inspector for the hard work that they've done so far and they're going to continue doing in our community. And just kudos to you, Mr. Alejandro, for getting that team together. I think we've come a very long way, we're not babies in diapers anymore, we're at least crawling. So that's a good thing, and we should be proud of the hard work that we've done. And secondly, I'd also like to, I mean, congratulations seems insufficient for those who got appointed to the zoning board of appeals tonight, because it really is a thankless job. So really just want to thank them for dedicating their time, because this is an unpaid position. But I really do appreciate my appointee, Jerry Aldridge, and also the rest of those who were appointed tonight, and just commend them for their community support. And lastly, I'd like to share that District Two Town Hall is happening tomorrow. Woohoo! And we're very excited, because I've been working with the city staff, the city manager, Mr. Alejandro as well, just to get all our materials together, so we have great updates to share, so I'm very excited. And I really look forward to seeing everyone, even if you do not live in District Two, you're still welcome, because it's also an opportunity for us to get together as a community, get to know one another, and just talk about our vision for District Two and the city of Mableton. That's all I got. Thank you all so much for coming tonight, and those who are watching online, we appreciate your engagement, and I hope you have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Jeff Coe.
Good evening, everyone. I'll try to be as brief as I can, I have a lot of updates I need to put out. I want to thank you all for being here, for your patience, we covered a lot of information tonight, good information, great information. And so thank you all for being here. I want to take a moment to acknowledge our colleague, Ron Davis, Councilwoman Ron Davis, who is not with us this evening. He recently experienced the loss of a loved one in his family, and we just want to ask that you keep him uplifted in prayer. While he may not be with us physically, he is here with us in spirit. We all know he has a heart to serve, and so Councilman Davis, we're thinking of you and your family during this difficult time, and we are keeping you in our thoughts and our prayers. I do want to also congratulate, as Councilwoman Oladipo mentioned, our entire code enforcement team and the inspection staff who was sworn in tonight. This is not only the formal start of their important duties, but it also highlights the trust that we place in you all to help maintain the safety, the beauty, and the integrity of our city. We know that you will help us ensure that our ordinance are enforced and also our infractions and keep our community clean and orderly. So we're very excited to have you all on board, and we look forward to seeing the impact your presence will have on our community. I do want to recognize the appointment of our zoning appeals board members. And as the mayor mentioned, they're volunteer positions, they stepped up in a critical capacity to ensure that, you know, the land use decisions are thoughtful and equitable and align with our vision as a community. And so we look forward to having them serve, and we just appreciate them, you know, stepping up to the plate. We really do appreciate that. And then I want to also call out some special birthday love tonight. Last week, my mother had a birthday on April 15th, tax day, so happy birthday, Mom. Thank you for always supporting me and Councilma for providing some good food, some good eats. I do want to wish Councilman Davis a happy birthday, his birthday was on Saturday. So we do thank you for your service. And then let's not forget, our mayor is, will be celebrating his birthday on Sunday, April 27th. So we do appreciate your vision and your leadership, Mayor.
Thank you.
And happy birthday.
Is it 12 or 15?
Right. Please, everyone, don't forget to get out and vote. There's a special election for Cobb County that's happening in District Two and Four on Tuesday, April 29th. It's critical for our community, and your participation is vital, so get out and vote. It's Saturday, advanced voting started on Saturday, last Saturday, April 19th. It'll continue through Friday, the 25th, and it's from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. There will be no voting April 26th through the 28th. And the hours are the same on Election Day, which is April 29th, at your assigned precinct, sync from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. For further details, go to Cobb County election website. Remember, your vote is your voice, so get out and vote. I do want to acknowledge Pebblebrook High School, which is in my district. Their award-winning acapella group Sonic Edge has been invited to perform and defend their national title as the national champions in New York City. But they need our help, they're scheduled to leave out tomorrow, but they just need a little extra help from the community, their remaining goal of $2,000 that they need to collect. So if you could go on Facebook, follow me on Facebook, the QR ID code is there, or you can come up and scan the QR ID code, I have it here with me. So if you get a chance, just please go and let's support the great work that they're doing. And then lastly, I have, I want to highlight an exciting opportunity for our youth. Kyle Parks is hosting a lunch and learn event. This is called I Got Bank, and it's titled Money Master Smart Budgeting and Wealth Building for Students. It's happening Saturday, May 10th, from 10:00 to 12:00 at the South Cobb Recreation Center. This is an in-person workshop, and it's for students ages 10 to 16, and it's gonna focus on financial literacy. It's gonna cover personal finance vocabulary, budgeting activities, career and salary exploration, and more. They'll also get a 60-page workbook, and lunch will be provided. The registration is $25 for Cobb residents, and the first 20 students that register will get some swag. And if you register before April 25th, which is just in two days, you'll also win a raffle, a raffle to win a gift card, which will include maybe. maybe something from Amazon or Roblox. This is a fantastic opportunity for our young people to learn about money management and that sort of thing. And I do want to thank Truist Foundation, Watson Institute, and Cobb County Parks for sponsoring this program. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Ock.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to keep this very short. Many of us and staff have been here since five, so we've been here about four hours. Just want to thank everyone who came out to my town hall, and Councilwoman Herndon's town hall last week. It was really great. Thank you to our staff, thank you to our council, and thank you to all of our citizens. Have a great night.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Ferguson.
Y'all have been talking about me, because I haven't made a comment, but today I will. Some years ago, I, as an individual, and me and my wife were, you know, having issues with conception and all sort of things. But as we went through IUIs and IVFs, we realized that telling our story was truly the thing that galvanized us and allowed us to see more people that were having the same issue and continuing to have this issue. So I'm going to continue to bring up this whole conversation about mental health in our community. And as soon as I started talking about it from this podium, I get tons and tons and tons of people who are saying, I'm dealing with the same thing. How do we get help? What can we do? And it's amazing the number of resources that we have out there. And one of them that I'm going to tell you about tonight is the Mableton pastors collective is doing a two-session thing with, yeah, thank you, with Wellstar Health Network. It's going to be on May 5th and May 12th. I'm sponsoring the May 5th event, so you can rest assured that there will be some good eats, that Jasmine's going to help me make sure we get up there. But there's a preregistration. If the registration link that you try to go to on the QR code does not work, reach out, and let's make sure that we can get you connected into that. Let's not, as a community, continue to suffer in silence. Let's continue to seek out community to do the work of community. I also want to go on record to state that, you know, my position of, on council, you know, our citizens, including me, will not pay for services we receive from the county twice. And please rest assured that this county is, this council is working on that. You know, a comment was made to me during our meeting last week that the whole reason for becoming a city was that we deliver a better service than what we currently are receiving. And I wholeheartedly agree. It's 100% the reason that I wanted to become a city. So let's come back to the table. You know, I look forward to getting back to conversations with the county to discuss how we can bring the best services to the citizens of Mableton. And just so we're clear, Mableton people pay property tax of some $43 million annually into Cobb County. And the city of Mableton is taking $9 million of that, and that's it. So don't ask me to pay 20. So I'm 100% behind my mayor and the city manager and the city attorney as we have these conversations. But let's not be fooled. We're not going to enter into a bad agreement, an agreement that does not directly do good for the citizens of Mableton. I don't care what you read in the paper. This council that you have before you is not going to do that. So I don't know how we're going to get through this, but we're going to get through this, because we've gotten through every other thing that has been brought to this council to date. And again, I have all of the confidence in the people that you see in front of you and the consultants that we have with us and everybody else to say, we ain't taking no, so. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Herndon.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to make this short and sweet. I want to send a heartfelt thank you to our mayor, to our city manager, to our Director of Waste Sustainability and Beautification, and to all the other staff, Mr. Farrell and his presentation. We got a lot of great feedback from constituents saying how much they, how much information they received at our last town hall for District Four and District Six. They really enjoyed the information, and you all really made our job so much easier. Thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you've done, and especially thank you to all the constituents who've shown up. And thank everyone for coming out tonight, and safe travels home.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Ladies and gentlemen of the council and staff and people who are watching, I just want to say thank you for coming tonight. We'll continue to do the work of the city. And with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for real estate litigation and personnel.
Make a motion to go.
Oh, and exemptions. Yes, exceptions as well.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for real estate litigation, personnel, and exemptions.
A second.
Thank you. Motion's been made and duly seconded. All those in favor of going to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Here in our opposition, the ayes have it. We will go into executive session. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen who have joined us tonight, who will not be here when we come out of executive session. I do appreciate your time and effort for joining us, and look forward to seeing you at our next city council meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you all for staying with us while we're in executive session. At this point in time, counsel, I'd like to accept a motion to exit out of executive session.
A motion to exit out of executive session.
Second. Thank you, motion's been made and duly seconded by Councilwoman Oladipo and seconded by Councilwoman Ock. I'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of exiting executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. We are now back into our regular session for this evening. Counsel, I do believe we have some business that is still in front of us. Councilwoman Ock, you have the floor.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution of the city of Mableton authorizing intergovernmental agreements with Cobb County and for other lawful purposes.
My second.
Thank you, motion has been made by Councilwoman Ock, seconded by Councilwoman Ferguson, and Councilwoman Hearn. I have a stopwatch on that one. Let's go ahead and call the question.
It's made by Ock and seconded by Ferguson?
Yes. I'll go ahead and call the question. All in favor of the motion made by Councilwoman Ock, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. There's no opposition, the eyes have it, thank you, it carries. Do we have any other business in front of us, counsel?
Yes, Mayor, I motion that we authorize the city attorney to provide notice to Cobb County, Georgia, in pursuant to OCGA 363111 and other applicable laws, that the city of Mableton shall purchase and assume ownership of all county parks within Mableton effective May 30th, 2025, for the purchase price of $100 per acre.
Second. Thank you, Councilwoman. The motion's been made and duly seconded by Councilwoman Ferguson. All in favor of any discussion, hearing no discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion made by Councilwoman Oladipo, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. It's clear that we have no opposition to this, this motion carries as well, thank you. Okay, counsel, is there any other item of business in front of us this evening?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
That's some great business, I like that.
My second.
Councilwoman Ock has made a motion to adjourn, this motion has been seconded by Councilwoman Jeffcoat. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. The motion carries with... Would you like to amend your vote, sir? Having no amendment to that, it's 5-1, and the motion carries, meeting's adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.